Okay, welcome to the May 31st Regular School Committee Meeting of the Neshova Regional School District. Calling the meeting to order at 6:01. We've got some citizens comments. I wonder if I should take the presentation. Before we get into, if it's okay with the committee, I'd like to move some items around. First of all, welcome Susan Verden.
Yay!
Susan is our third, not in order, but she's the third. School Committee Rep from Lancaster, welcome to the school committee, we're really thrilled to have you. Susan is a teacher, why don't you tell them a little bit about you?
I teach in Lunenburg, if you haven't already spoken with, I teach in Lunenburg. This was my 16th year, first year at the sixth grade level, all the others at fifth grade, so I'm certified English middle school. Yeah, and I thought this was a great opportunity to sort of see the other side of health things.
Great.
Thank you for serving.
Jennifer Leone, did we ever allow you to introduce yourself?
No, that's okay.
Jennifer now is the third Lancaster rep. Why don't you, because you've got a pretty impressive background too, why don't you tell folks a little bit about yourself?
I served six and a half years on the Lancaster Board of Selectmen during some pretty tough times, and then I'm currently the Lancaster representative to Minuteman as well.
So, thank you so much. All right, so I think what we're gonna do, if it's okay with everyone, is since we've got a presentation today, and we've got a young man with his teacher, why don't we flip the agenda a little bit and do that before we dismiss everyone into executive session? Okay? Come on up, introduce yourselves, and tell us what you're gonna talk to us about. Hello, young man, how are you?
This is Max Valentino.
Nice to meet you. You want me to move out of the way here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to use my phone.
Would you like to sit in this seat? Or would you like to stand when you speak?
I guess I'll stand.
Okay, you can stay.
My name's Marshall Malone, I'm the PE teacher at Center School, PE in health. For about eight workshops, I've gone to Beverly, to Project Adventure, and I've done about eight workshops up there. Really, really enjoyed what they have to offer through four students, so I bring it to the classroom. What I learned there, I bring to the classroom. And I grew up in Stowe, so I actually went, I've been on this low and high elements. Mr. Guzzi was my PE teacher, and he actually brought us to the high elements. We actually went up into the, about 20 feet up, 30 feet up, and I've experienced the course in the back between Hale and Center. So I'm trying to bring it back the best we can. So I'm starting with the low elements.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
What is Project Adventure? I don't think we know what that is.
Project Adventure, actually Hale School goes to Project Adventure in October, November, I believe.
September.
And they go to Beverly, and it's a program where it allows students, and it also has it for corporations, but it allows people to work together, listen, cooperate, give their input, and just, and challenge themselves.
Like nature's classroom?
I guess a little bit, because this is a ropes course, it has logs, it has height, and it's just giving children the opportunity to experience things, and as we've been working on in Stowe, about both mindset, to experience things at a safe area where they are challenging themselves, and not given, and not, and thinking that they are not able to, but they don't have to do that yet. They can do a small, a lower level, and so that they can get there at some point.
Okay, thank you.
And so I bring it to the school, and I start in kindergarten with little, very small activities, and then I have a second grade, and I, it's a circular thing, it goes round and round, it's a spiral. So you teach a little bit at a time, and then the fourth graders, if I feel that the class is cohesive enough and able to work together and safely, and they really are listening to each other and thinking of strategies, I bring them out into the low elements course. So that, I had the opportunity, two years in a row, I've had the opportunity to do that. So I wanted to bring it to you, what we do in PE at school. So, let me get this back going. This is a prezi presentation. So here are the many things, many elements that are at Beverly, in Beverly at Project Adventure, but I'll point out the ones that we actually have that are inspected and usable at, between Center and Hale. So again, it's an adventure program, always an adventure when we go out for PE. And as you see these students, they are watching nature, okay, and they're observing nature. But I think this picture, I look at this picture and I say, okay, the students are being active. The students in my class are the nature. They are the ones that are being active, the butterfly flying around and seeing what they're, you know, and I'm the teacher, I'm the students here, and I'm observing how active they are, what risks they're taking, how they are working together and communicating to each other. I try to step in as little as possible and get these students to think, work together, strategize, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but then they have to come back and try something different, and brainstorm. And we have the A, B, C, D, E, which was problem solving, working on problems. So this, every activity, it should be a surprise for them. I try not to give them everything that's gonna happen. I want them to be surprised. I want them to see the equipment out there and say, oh, now, you know, what are we gonna do now? They're always asking me questions, what are we doing? I let them adventure through it. There are challenges, we do challenges throughout, there are levels. So some students, and we do, we have students that are not athletes, but they're very capable of doing something. So there are levels where they can, and they do, I do ask them to risk, you know, take risks and challenge. I want you to take a choice of where you wanna, where you wanna start, and if you feel good at that, then go to another level. And everyone is engaged, everyone's communicating with each other, and trying to come up with a solution. Always challenges. We are, this is one of our, the Mohawk Walk, I do have it, it's not what we're able to use right now, it's not, it did not pass inspection, but we do have that. Challenges, again, as I said, it is, we want to bring them to success, but we let them know that they're going to, that they're not always going to make it the first time around. I feel that failure is okay, it's okay to fail, we just have to work on doing something different maybe, or try it again. And talk to each other, try to work with each other, and taking risks. It's okay to take a risk, as long as it's safe, and we'll work on that, and that's what Max is gonna talk about. And we put some, we put them in situations, so it is safe. It becomes natural where they are, they're trying to think of strategies that they're capable of doing, and you'll see in a video where I, noticing that some things, I had to freeze it, I had to stop what they were doing, they did a very nice job listening, but we had to fix it so that it continued to be safe, and it was just, the board was awkward, and it wasn't in a nice situation where it was balanced, and you'll see. But we need to always want to make, not just safe physically, but we want everyone to be kind to each other. We don't want people pushing each other around. And that's another thing Max will be speaking about, is the safe environment, and another student's gonna be talking about how they're respecting each other. And when they find out that someone's having a difficult time, it's amazing to see how others will step in and help, and not get mad at them, but will encourage them or work with them, so they can move along a lot further. And we don't do it to a limit to where they're fit mentally over, you know, can't do it. Okay? Of course, we want it to be fun. Okay. So this, we took, Detective Solis came out and helped me to, we had two projects going on. This is the TP Shuffle, of course, it is, as we're on it, it isn't inspected. And I have Caterina here, who's gonna give a little talk about Challenge by Choice.
Hi, my name's Caterina, and I'll be talking about Challenge by Choice. Now, here was a challenge, so as expected, we failed to accomplish. I liked how everyone listened to each other, and we all got to do a job and help each other out. As the challenge went on, we all learned something new about each other. Everyone experienced a creative community, since everyone had something different to say. The full value contract, play hard, play safe, and play fair, helped people not get aggravated when someone goofed around. During the challenge, when someone disagreed with someone, they were polite about it.
This is a, Jacob's gonna talk next, and this is a, the TP Shuffle, again, and this is just the lower level. When we get, and I didn't speak of, I don't know if any of you have experienced it, but in TP Shuffle at a higher level, I would've told them that you're not to allow to help. If you're on the ground, you're not allowed to hold them, they would have to work trying to, the idea is to get across without falling off. But at this level, I was not gonna say, no, you can't touch the people, if you're ready to come off, you can, they can step off. But I wanted them to just experience going from one side of the log to the other, and they had to go in alphabetical order. They just were, they were on the log, and then they had to get in alphabetical order as they're on the log. So they had to get around, and they had to work it out, how to get from one side to the other, another person. This is Jacob, and he's gonna talk about his experiences.
The TP Shuffle is where you can't just do it yourself, you had to listen to others and try their ideas, in order to solve the problem. In this picture, my group chose this idea to try, and was trying to get me past the other people on the board by supporting the whole board. And for the second activity, I ended up sitting on the board for most of the time to help support when people were on it. At one point, Ms. Malone stopped us to try to get, find out how the people on the second island would get to the third island. Then class ended, but I, after that, but it probably wouldn't have worked the first time, probably would need to brainstorm another idea. But one thing I really liked was how much my team was working together and not yelling and saying that only their idea mattered, and weren't yelling and not listening to others, and how much they were working together to get things done, and it was a good lesson to act the life skills, like playing team sports where you can't just, you have to pass the puck or ball around to win games, it's not really about you to play on a team, there's always like a team sport, you can play like hockey, football, basketball, games like that, you have to pass the puck around or pass the ball around, you can't just take it down the ice or court by yourself, and stuff like that. It also helps in life lessons where you can listen to your parents, not yelling at them, you just listen to them and do what they say, and that's something this lesson applies to. It actually helped a little bit earlier when we were doing this, when we played this game earlier in the year called Salam Bear and Fly, where you had to talk with your team on what animal you were gonna do, be it salmon, bear, or fly. And we always had to change, choose the second one unless it was a tie, and that also really helped in life.
So what he was talking about, as I said, it spiraled throughout, and this is the book that I get the information from, the curriculum, in regards to all the games, and there are other resources I go to in regards to the activities they use. This is Caterina, right there. As you see here, he's actually not being touched by anyone, but Caterina is helping him cross Willow, I think it is. But that's pretty good, how he's being successful without anyone on the sides helping. So that's, would be the next level. So here, these, the adventure program, these are the three things that they, that I focus on throughout the whole curriculum. So the full value contract, being safe, fair, and hard, which equals fun, if you don't --
Well, I'm gonna let Max hotbox. Yeah, we wanna hear from Max, no offense, but we really do wanna hear from Max.
This is Max.
Hello, I'm Max, fourth grader from the Center School. I'll be talking about my experiences with the full value contract, which is playing fair, safe, and working hard. In a game called Knee Tag, we played hard, we had to stay focused and remember the rules, such as not covering our knees when running. We also played fair by following the rules and kneeling down when tagged out. In all games, we play safe by paying attention and not doing things that may harm self or others. The games are a lot of fun, you can use the skills you learn in everyday life. In school projects, we sometimes work in groups and need to listen to each other's ideas. In baseball and basketball, we also play hard, safe, and fair. We follow the rules of the game and stay safe by communicating with each other. Playing out our positions and only throwing the ball when the other person is looking. I enjoy this curriculum because we had fun, we didn't even realize we were learning these skills at the same time.
Excellent.
Nice job.
So as, exactly, that's exactly what happens, they do have fun, and they enjoy what's going on. Then we have the Challenge by Choice, and the experiential learning cycle, which we'll hear a little bit about later from Savannah. And these are the goal settings, we, when we set goals, we always need to think about being smart about. We have to make sure that they're specific, and this is not what the kids do, this is what I try and get them, to come through questioning, for them to be thinking about, and if they're missing, I'll ask them questions about it, to make sure that we have a goal, so we understand, everyone's understanding what the goal is, in order to go and achieve it.
Hi, my name is Savannah, and I will be talking about my experiences in the game. When we were playing a game, we worked together, and talked about how our claims were coming together. When we played Bear, Sam, and Mosquito, we knew that we had to work together to win the game. We learned that when we cooperated in the game. We were playing another game where our goal was to get the bean bags across the plank to another end. And we set goals and allowed us to work together and achieve greater success.
Sorry about the background, but hold on. So it is, we're always setting the goals, and they understand, it's okay if it doesn't work out, they're gonna get back, and if they have to, get back and work on it again. And if that doesn't happen, we'll go through another activity. I won't go back to that one, because there's other things to learn, and they'll learn these same, same skills, and bring it to the next activity, and we'll continue to work on building the problem solving, communicating. So this last slide is, the students actually, this is a, the finale in a sense, we bring all these things together, and this is on the islands, this is what Jacob was talking about, there's three islands, and we have two planks, and the planks will not meet across from one island to the other. So they have to work on putting these, using these planks, and they've got to get their animal friends from one side of the islands all the way to the other side of the island. And of course, the time we had, we didn't have, they weren't able to finish it. But I certainly hope that I'd be able to take them back before school is out.
Make sure you're sitting, Jacob. You might wanna get off.
I asked you to get, I asked you to step on there.
You gotta have the bull.
I know. Yes, yes, yes.
Everyone should actually stand on their own skin.
Okay, now run across. Okay, now. Let's go, E! Let's go, E! E, E, E! E, E, E! Go, someone else!
Caterina, go across.
I'm gonna go across.
No, no, no. I was close.
I'm gonna go across.
Go, Caterina!
And freeze.
Can you fix the soap? The water's not all right across.
Go, Caterina! Go, Caterina!
K, A, T, R.
Caterina, Caterina, Caterina!
Guys, look, everybody look!
Oh, quick, everybody can't play.
Yeah, and how's the people gonna get this board?
And good question, freeze, freeze, very good question.
How's the last person?
How's the last person gonna cross?
One, two.
How's the people gonna get this board?
It's basically, if all of us can't stand on that, how are we not gonna stand on this?
I'll say the height.
Everyone else can approach.
I mean, here's yourself, you got two people.
I think Melissa should go right now.
You are, yeah, you guys, you guys could pass the board.
I'll be last, tribute is last.
I'm last.
From the lightest person?
So they'll continue to talk about that, and manage about, and hopefully I can take them back out, so they can have some kind of thought of what it would take for all of them to come across, and it is possible, but they do have to think about the weight, the size, who can fit on the small one, who, how are we gonna get them to the other side, and bring the planks back, et cetera. So it's a lot of thinking, it's a lot of working together, it's a lot of, like Caterina, she, no, E was the first one to walk across, was Caterina, one of them. And to get the challenge and say, you know, to feel comfortable about doing that, they, she had to take a little bit of a risk, so.
So do the other schools do this program, or is it just the Center and Hale?
Center and Hale have the low elements course outside. There are three that we can use, there are three that are inspected and are able to use. Bolton has the indoor wall, Hale has an indoor wall, Lancaster, I don't know.
You have a wall too in Lancaster?
There is a wall in the middle school, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. But about the low elements, I don't know.
Wonderful. Questions, Lynn?
Well, I was wondering, you took eight classes in Beverly?
I took eight workshops.
So you did this on your own, or is this part of the school program?
I needed PDP points, professional development points, and that's where I chose to bring a lot of my professional development points to, I love the experience.
And the course is outside, you have to get inspected, and some stuff isn't, I know there's stuff back there?
Yes.
How much of the course can you actually use right now?
Right now, I have three, the TPT Shuffle, that's the one where they try to get across from each other. The islands, I can use, and then there's a swing, which I didn't get to, a pole, that is a swinging pole, so they'd be walking across the swinging pole.
Is that the extent of the whole, sorry, is that the extent of the whole course?
No, we have the shuffle that I showed at the beginning, there was the, and there is another item which I cannot use because they're not inspected. So there's two other things that we could probably use.
If they're inspected?
If they're inspected, but it does the Mohawk Walk, that is one that we do have, it's, the wires are not, the wire, the tree's growing over the wires, so they have put new wires in. And the other one is, what's called, it's like, it's a V, and they try to walk across with their feet on the, on the wires, and as a group, they try to walk out from those wires. Let me see if I can have it here.
So, one more question, just because we're really, really tight, and before I take the question, thank you very much for coming in and sharing this with us, because certainly it's nice to see something other than in the classroom, and we love digital learning, but this is wonderful, I mean, this is the M, the, what's the, the elixir to that, right? And you, young man, did a wonderful job. So one more question, folks, just because we've got a lot on the agenda, Cap?
Just real quick, is the process for reflection, the debriefing, part of the activity, do they, at the end of an activity, how does that work? How do you capture or what the kids have taken away from it?
Right, the debriefing is, we go over our goal, did we achieve our goal, and what do they think that they liked? What did they think that they didn't like? So then when they, we talk, I give three about what we, what they liked. How did that come about? Why did you like that? And then the didn't like would be the problem solving. You didn't like that, why didn't you like that? What can we do to make that better? What can we make up for next time we do an activity? How can we improve on that?
Thank you.
Just, thirty seconds. So I really appreciate the collaborative element that gets brought outside the classroom. I know that they really reinforce that intellectually in the classrooms daily, but the idea that you can bring it out and reinforce it in the physical world, I think is a great way of coming full circle with that.
Right, no, I love it. Thank you, thank you. And there's so many, I know you have time, but there's so many opportunities with this as a community, as a district community, that would be wonderful, but that's down the road. It doesn't have to be.
So the faculty does this, Russ?
Not a bad idea, I was just thinking, you know, a lot of corporate retreats do stuff just for this very purpose, to bring teamwork that's brought out of the office, there's no reason why not to do it, so kids can bring it back in the classroom, do that, you know, the cognitive collaboration. So it is, it's one of those enhancements that we do have the opportunity, luckily we have some things available right now, and then hopefully we can expand that, now that I've learned more this year about it, you know, looking for fundraising and other opportunities to make sure we can expand it and use more of it in the future.
I'd love to see it in all of the schools.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you both very much, thanks for, it was clear you put a lot of time into the presentation.
As long as she was able, we had kids change their schedules, and now tonight changed, so she was able in the last couple days to put together some kids who should've been here, but they had other commitments, so that's what you saw on the screen today. Thank you, Max.
Appreciate it. Again, lovely job. Enjoy the rest of your school year, but don't enjoy the summer, okay? Thanks, Mom, for bringing them in.
Sure, thank you.
All right, if it's okay with folks, we're gonna jump right in. We have citizens' comments on the agenda, I don't see any citizens' comments. Dan, do you have any citizens' comments?
Yeah, you have a vote, and just one, one question, do you have a vote, you know, schedule, you're gonna do the vote publicly now, like your contract, or?
We will come back and do the vote publicly, yes, as soon as the executive session is over, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, okay. So why don't we now move into executive session? I think, let's see, who needs to stay? So school committee, Dr. Bates, you're gonna stay. George, you're welcome to stay if you feel you want to. And I think if we could just move right into this, I need a motion.
I move that we enter executive session for the purposes of discussing superintendent contract negotiation.
Enroll call, Kathy, second to enroll call, vote Neil?
Yes, aye.
And Lynn?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
And Yes On the Ring. Kathy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And Ms. Jen? Wonder, oh. All right, welcome back. We're moving into new business, and the first item is a vote to accept the superintendent's contract. The school committee has communicated with Ms. Brooke Clenchey, and we have made her an offer that she has accepted, and I need someone to make a motion to accept the superintendent's contract as presented. Kathy?
I vote that we accept the superintendent's contract.
Jennifer seconded, all those in favor. It's unanimous, thank you very much. The contract will be signed by Superintendent, well, elect Superintendent Elect Clenchey tomorrow, and as soon as it's signed, we will post it on the school committee page of the website. Okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you all. Okay. Neil, I think you're gonna cover the policies tonight. Oops, do you want me to jump to something else?
I prefer that.
Okay. RFP for legal counsel, why don't we do that while Neil's getting himself ready? Okay, so the school committee really needs to have a designated organization or organizations for its legal services. So to my knowledge, it's been many years since an RFP has been distributed. Um, so, to my knowledge, it's been many years since an RFP has been distributed. So without objection, we, I'd like to put out an RFP for legal services. Typically, this is done with the business manager to ensure that we're following proper protocol. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Bates and Superintendent Lieutenant Clenchey to work with us on that. So we don't need a vote unless there's an objection to this. You good?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. All right. Neil? Okay, let's move to something else. Hey, Mark, can you speak to budget schedule proposal?
Uh, yes. I just prepared myself.
Oh, my goodness. See, see, it's epidemic. There's three of us.
Didn't read the agenda carefully. Um, so the finance committee did, um, review a skeleton, um, calendar for the budget for the coming year, which we would like to have the entire school committee discuss. Let me pull up my own copy from my finance committee website, web page.
Is it in the packet?
It is not in the packet, unfortunately, no.
Is it in the finance committee's meeting materials?
Um, I suspect it is not, and so I should need to find my own copy.
Bear with me a moment. We are looking smooth.
So rough night. How's it going in the classrooms, Robin?
It's warm, but some of them are very warm.
Okay, do you wanna move this item to the next?
Um, if you bear with me for a minute, we can at least talk about some, and, you know, we don't have to have a agreement tonight.
I can, uh...
Okay, let's jump back. Susan?
Yeah.
And Jennifer? Where it's not normally. Go ahead, Neil, why don't you speak to us about policies?
We have five policies that we're moving forward to the school committee today. Um, the first one is the online communication policy. These are all for second reading, by the way, so we could go to, to vote if, uh, you all approve them, or send them back if you'd like. Overnight field trips and student travel. So there were some questions, um, with regard to, um, healthcare needs and so forth. And last time, uh, when we sent this back, um, from the school committee back to policy, we, um, had this also sent forward to, uh, the school nurse to take a look at policy and make sure that it all synced up. Um, so the change that, um, we're adding in here, um, well, you can see in the red, superintendent and school committee is required, um, for, uh, in, before engaging in fundraising activities, student healthcare needs, um, need to be detailed, and final approval not be granted until all preparations for the trip have been completed. So what, those healthcare needs have to be evaluated prior to everything, um, moving forward, and it needs to go in front of the district nurse, or, or, correct me, or is it the school nurse? That would review individual, the overnight travel? So I think it's the school nurse, the individual school nurse.
This question will go to the coordinator, half the members.
Right. So before it moves, you know, down the whole pipeline, um, we just make sure that we're okay with that, so. If anyone has any further questions.
Um, Neil, can you, can you move the online communication policy to the next meeting? Because that's the wrong policy in there. It says online communication policy, but it's a duplicate overnight field trip, so just move it to the next meeting if we could?
Yes.
Thank you. So that would be the six fifteen meeting?
Oh, that was such a good one, too.
All right, and...
That was overnight field trips and student travel.
Yeah, but was the online communication policy, was that the one that needed to be communicated with?
What's happening?
Yeah, so the union actually, the unions actually looked at it, the policy as we have that we are moving forward, just FYI, the union has looked at, they've approved, um, that version of the policy that we have.
For the overnight?
Yeah, no, for the online policy that's missing, so we're moving that forward. The overnight, we had the district nurses take a look at, um, making sure that everything synced up with overnight travel, because there were student healthcare concerns. Uh, and so, what was added to the policy there, you can see in red, um, involves student health needs need to be met prior to committing to the field trip. So the nurse has to, the, the school nurse would review any proposed overnight field trips prior to all that information getting released to, say, the students and the teachers and my boss.
Okay.
Any further questions on that?
Nope. Anybody have any questions on those? You want to move to the committing funds?
So, committing funds, um, this is one that's been floating around for a little while also, and it deals with, um, some changes that were sent back down, and, uh, we're looking at adding any single initiative that would be fifty thousand dollars in total or more. Then with the, uh, number of fiscal years, um, the initiative and associate, associated financial payments will run for, so let's say we have a three-year, three hundred thousand dollar, I'm sorry, um, yeah, three-year, three hundred thousand dollar, uh, process. There would need to be a, um, we have to be told about this in order to commit those funds. Uh, and we'd have to know how long this initiative is gonna last, so that if it does have this overrun or whatnot, we're aware of this. Um, we need to know the nature of the lease loan or acquisition, the annual cost, any additional costs that are incurred by extending the payments beyond a single fiscal year, and the means by which the commitment could be paid off or otherwise ended, that's one of the changes, should there be a change in the financial condition of the school system.
Okay.
And then, you know, we took out a couple of other things.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on the committing funds policy?
Um, do we have to tie this to thirty B at all? And is there a limit for that?
I don't think we do, because this, this, I, I think...
I understand the intent behind it, I was just wondering because of the...
Well, I don't know that we need to tie it to it, if that's a regulation that...
I think thirty B has specific...
We have to follow that. Well, yeah. But... I don't think we need to know it anymore, do we? Any other questions on that one? Okay, annual budgets?
Uh, annual budgets. Uh, this one has some minor changes that have been made here and there, but I think they are, they're minor, but, uh, in, in terms of numbers, but they are substantial. So, um, you can see that we changed, um, regional school committee delegates development of district budget to superintendent and de facto business manager in collaboration with the regional school committee. We had to just introduce minor changes, regional school district, uh, regional school committee, sorry. Uh, financial subcommittee shall recommend the budget model, this is the biggest change that we have, zero base level service, et cetera, for the upcoming budget cycle. Uh, that's not, never actually really been defined or talked about, and so we're talking about, you know, obviously doing that, um, this point forward with this. And...
We added the budget book, that's good.
Yep.
And the next paragraph?
Yeah, I mean, do you want me to read?
No, you don't need to.
Because I mean, that was the change that was made in there.
You do not, because I'm assuming everybody's read the policies, and if they haven't, they need to speak. They have questions to speak out.
It also deals with, um, the annual budget for each school operated by the district shall be reviewed, uh, with the principal, and shall reflect the priorities established in the annual school improvement plan. Um, that's important, that we bring the principals in there. We added the budget book, so that we have one each year, and some quick guidelines on that. And in accordance with district agreement and state regulations, a public hearing shall be held prior to March fifteenth.
Okay.
That's really it.
Any questions?
Yes, unfortunately. So we actually need to approve the budget by March fifteenth according to our district agreement. I have a public hearing.
Yeah.
So we need to shift that back.
But it says a public hearing will be held prior to March fifteenth.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about approval or anything. So we actually had that, uh, we discussed that in the policy subcommittee, but because it did not say, um...
I think that covers us.
It doesn't corral us into anything, is, is what it...
Right, Mark?
It needs to be approved, so you need to have the hearing, obviously, before March fifteenth.
Right.
Are we obliged by statute to have a hearing a particular number of days before adoption? Is it gonna be adopted immediately on the hearing? And the other one is, and I'm still, still quibbling about who's in charge. If we have two partners and they don't agree with each other, we've got the superintendent and the school committee working on stuff. And, um, I'm still not happy about shifting over the delegation to the superintendent, but rather, it's really the school committee and its subcommittees in charge, and they're working in collaboration with the superintendent. So, um, I'm just not really in favor of this phrasing.
So, let's talk through that a little bit.
We, we talked about this, again, this came out of the policy, and, and we don't develop the budget. We oversee, we're overseers of this. We delegate the administration to develop the budget. And so that's, that's what this is, is saying here, but we've added in collaboration with the regional school committee, um, because that, that oversight is necessary. Uh, so that's, that's the perspective that we have.
Is the word collaboration killing you, Mark? Would you...
All right, and actually, I went and looked at the MAS C, um, model, model version. This is actually a revision of the model version. Most of the revisions you're seeing are deviations from the model. And so, I just wanna call out that the model actually says that it's the school committees that's in charge through their subcommittee rather than the superintendent. And I just wanna say, given our recent experience with school committee not even acting on their own policy, I wanna keep the school committee in charge of the, the budget process. And then, through their being in charge, they, you know, more informally or year to year, collaborate with the superintendent and their staff.
So what does the MAS C, is, is it without this red, or does it say something different?
Basically, the policy here is, if you took out all the revisions, it's substantially the same as the MAS C.
School always delegates with the superintendent.
Well, mostly they are, they, they start with the MAS C as the basis for the policy, and then modify it after district needs.
So what this, so what you're saying is the MAS C version reads something like, the regional school committee delegates the development of the district budget to the budget subcommittee, which will, with the superintendent, business manager, and the district treasurer, develop annual budgets for the operating and maintenance of the district and such capital budgets, as shall be necessary for the pursuit of the goals of the district, blah blah.
Right.
So the substantial change is, the school committee delegates the development of the district budget to the subcommittee. You want it to stay with the subcommittee?
I want it to stay with, with the school committee and through the school committee, it's the subcommittee.
But the school committee, but the subcommittee doesn't really develop the budget, that's, that's, that's the catch for me.
That's true, but it doesn't mean that they can't then annually talk about the process. So if you buy a policy, have the administration, you know, completely in charge, then the school committee is, like our recent experiences, in a sense, closed out of the process and without inquiry, rather than being a, you know, a prime mover. And that's, so that's the worry. We've had this experience, people didn't really understand their own power. And I don't wanna put that, that particular experience into our policy, which is what I think we've been working to change over this last year.
Except for, if I'm not mistaken, the collaboration part is not in the MAS C or the plate. And we, we added the in collaboration with the regional school committee, so that, well, collaborating.
That suggests that we play a part in developing the budget if we're collaborating. Can the, can the word oversight of the school committee? Yeah. Oversight, and I think the word delegates is what's killing us. It's the delegating that is at odds, I think. So, yeah, the work is in collaboration, but I think that word delegates is what's throwing this discussion. Because this policy, this suggested policy currently says that the school committee is delegating it to the superintendent, which Mark is taking issue with. Susan is saying, well, we could say we're delegating it to the superintendent in collaboration with the school committee, but I think Mark's issue is the word delegate. Is that correct?
Or delegating it out of the hands of the school committee.
Right.
Saying who's in charge, if you have two partners that don't agree, the draft policy says the superintendent's in charge. And we've had this experience where we didn't agree, and we don't wanna be by policy in a location where we don't have a say, or we have to change the policy.
Because it's up, because we're responsible for the budget.
Yeah. And then I completely understand, informally and, and in practice, the administration does ninety percent of the work, but, but under, um, the influence and direction of the school committee.
How about if we said the school committee provides oversight of the, on the development of the district budget?
Period. The superintendent, and de facto business manager, in collaboration, et cetera, will develop annual budgets, et cetera.
Because I don't think it's accurate to say that the school committee develops the budget.
No, we absolutely don't, and this, this is, this is also supposed to be the explanation of procedural, um, action that takes place, and, and, I mean, that's one of the three tenants that we have, is what I know, of the school committee. And so we delegate the development of the budget to the administration, who then develops the budget. I mean, that's, they're, they're the ones that develop this and then come forward to us, and it, it needs to be in collaboration, which...
So if I were Nicole, if I were Nicole, I would say, don't, we need to be cautious not to be building policy around a bad or a not optimal experience that we may have had. So don't, and I, and I know the sensitivity, and I get it, and I looked at your face and I get it. But we're kind of at an impasse here, and need...
Because do we have a budget subcommittee?
No, we do not.
We've never done that. You know, so I'm, I'm looking at saying, why don't we give the base a try here? Would, and may as, and have a subcommittee, a budget subcommittee?
I think we have a finance subcommittee, which is about our, their budget subcommittee.
And they just started getting involved.
Finance is a budget, we come into that.
So where are we?
We can change the budget to the finance subcommittee.
That's, it's in there.
Well, the, they took out budget subcommittee, but...
Yeah, but I think they put the budget subcommittee in there because, are the towns supposed to be blocks in there?
No, now we're getting way out. No.
What are you talking about, as far as budget?
Well, the original, the original wording.
That's removed because most of these things refer to a school district that is part of the town.
Right.
We're a regional school district, so we had to modify that to whoever just made that point, um, so that we don't have a budget subcommittee who would report to the...
The finance subcommittee.
Well, they'd report to whoever was the governing body of the town.
So we have a finance subcommittee, the towns have a budget subcommittee, and we need to figure out what we're gonna do with this policy, or does someone have a burning desire? Mark's already expressed, excuse me, that he would like not to see, um, the finance subcommittee removed from the ownership of the development of the budget.
So can we just put finance subcommittee back in? Where it says budget subcommittee, just substitute that for finance subcommittee with the superintendent, de facto business manager. You can take out in collaboration with the regional school committee, which will develop budgets, da, 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 da.
He's still in a collaborative school committee.
What's that line? I can't hear you.
He's still in a collaborative school committee.
Yeah, but that, you already...
But your finance subcommittee is your collaboration, and then that would present it to the school committee as a whole. And we still have the ability to vote down.
How do you feel about that?
Um, yeah, substantially where the policy started. So basically, my interpretation of policy is, the school committee doesn't want to do all the work. They're delegating it to its subcommittee. They're in charge, and they're going to do the work with the administration.
Right. They're getting paid to do the work. We hired them to do the work.
And so the school committee is kind of in charge, but they're doing it with the administration. And the delegation is really school committee to finance committee, as opposed to, in the original policy. And I think that's fine, and I think that's, that's what I'm advocating for.
Neil and Kathy and Susan, any thoughts?
So what does that all mean? Just add the finance subcommittee in there where budget subcommittee was removed? Is that what you're saying, Mark? Or...
So you're, yes, you're replacing what...
I just want to understand, Mark, because I think I'm in agreement with Mark's saying, but...
Yes.
Well, I would, yeah, rename the budget committee to finance subcommittee, which, which will, with superintendent and the business manager, develop annual budgets. Basically, it's saying, they're delegating, and they'll do the work with.
Right.
And that's basically, you don't need to talk about collaboration because they're working with these individuals.
Did you get that, Neil?
Hmm, mm-hmm.
How do you feel about that?
Well, except for we don't develop the budget. That's, that's the only, that's the only stick where I have.
But the first line says you're delegating the bu, development of the budget.
Right, so we're not removing that, is what you're saying?
Correct.
You're just adding that.
You're, 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 so the regional school committee delegates the development of the district budget to the finance subcommittee, which will, with the superintendent, business manager, and the regional school committee...
No, no.
No.
Take that out.
Take out that.
You're taking out it.
With the business manager, develop annual budgets for the operating, and then the rest of the sentence.
Right. But you're saying the finance subcommittee is a school committee...
Well, I mean, they're interchangeable.
Right, and you're saying they don't develop it, but in here it'll say that they do develop it.
Well, it does, right. That's, I mean, that's my perspective on it. That's how, that's how the conversation went in the, in the policy, was, I mean, we went round and round on that very thing, and I'll be honest with you, I had the same stand that Mark is saying on this.
Yeah.
And, and I kind of capitulated on that side, saying, well, we don't. I mean, we don't develop the budget, so by saying that we're delegating the development of the budget to the finance subcommittee, and that it is, in fact, making the school committee partially responsible for the development of the budget. We're, we own...
We own the budget whether we're developing it or not, once it's voted. It's your name, my name, everybody else's name, so that doesn't really matter. So whatever we get, we own.
With, you know, you delegate it to the subcommittee, which will, with the administration, cause it to come to view.
That's fine. If everybody wants that, who am I staying away?
So can we get a final...
So one other option. You could state, "The regional school district committee, or the regional school committee delegates the development of the district budget to the superintendent and de facto business manager in collaboration with the finance subcommittee." And that keeps the finance subcommittee in the loop.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to take out the...
But I want the committee in front on the "with," not behind, because it's, it's the committee that's responsible for this darn thing, and they need to participate with it all the way.
Well, that, in my mind, that's what collaboration means, but, I mean, I know what you're saying.
I, I think that in collaboration piece on the regional, on the regional school committee is... What, what do you, what do you want to share with that? Seriously, what do you want to share?
The "with" before and after. That's what we're talking about. Do you agree with Mark?
So here's the model version from MAS C, just to clarify. So everyone's working on the same words.
Weren't you in policy talking with us about this?
Yeah, I'm happy with it then either.
Didn't we actually reach some sort of consensus at that point in time? All right, maybe not.
So basically, it says, "Delegates development to finance policy subcommittee, which will, with superintendent, develop the annual budgets for the blah, blah, blah." So that's, you don't need to collaborate, they're just working with each other, and person, per entity in charge is the finance subcommittee.
I'm good with this.
And that's substantially what our own policy said before we revised it.
Before we...
I seem to recall that the last time this came up, I referred us to the MAS model policy on the annual budget. And, and this isn't it.
So it's different?
It's about, it's like, well, it's, it's a lot shorter.
Right.
And I thought, and I passed that along to Nicole.
You did, and we rejected that policy when you...
Just, all right.
What was it, Kathy? What did it read?
"The annual budget is the financial expression of the educational program of the school department, and it mirrors the problems and difficulties that confront the school system." "The budget, then, is more than just a financial instrument required, that requires on the part of the committee, the staff and community, orderly and cooperative effort to ensure sound fiscal practices for achieving the educational goals and objectives of the school system. Public school budgeting is regulated and controlled by legislation, state regs, and local school committee requirements. The operating budget for the school system will be prepared and presented in line with state policy and will be developed and refined in accordance with these requirements. Superintendent will serve as budget officer, but he she may delegate portions of this responsibility to members of his or staff, as he deems appropriate. Three general areas of responsibility for the superintendent as budget officer will be budget preparation, budget presentation, and budget administration." And I think I recall saying, "This is the actual policy component, and what we're talking about is more procedural."
Right, and so the reason that a policy, when we did get that, you were gone when, when we went over that.
Sorry.
Like, no, let's, I, no, I'm just, I'm just telling you historically. And the reason that we decided not to move that forward is because it did not involve the school committee, who is responsible for the budget process to the extent that they should be. It was a little bit more of the same thing. The superintendent will be sort of running the show and then delegating at that point.
Okay.
So we need to find out, so I think bottom line is, we need to set this back, right, to policy, and then maybe...
But in order to send it back, we have to define what everybody's thinking. So is the issue that we have, so here's what I'm hearing, and jump in if you've got something else. On one side of the table, people would like to see that the school committee is responsible for the budget and delegates to the superintendent in tandem with the school committee itself. So it's the school committee taking the lead, or it's the superintendent as the delegate taking the lead? I think that's the difference, right? Is the school committee taking the lead, or is the superintendent taking the lead? And I think we're starting to get into splitting hairs a little bit, because if the superintendent is the delegate and the school committee is the responsible party, I know where you're coming from, Mark. You're saying, I don't want the superintendent or the administration to take the lead. But you know, I'm wondering if the issue is process versus policy, because there was a process that was not...
Committee was not following this particular policy in the past years.
For whatever reason.
For whatever reason, right.
Right.
It was certainly just the culture of the school committee at that point. And it's not the place that I would like the school committee to be located.
So I'm not sure if a procedural issue can be resolved in a policy, because that's kind of like, if there's a, you know, I'm over-exaggerating, but you know what? There was a cyclone once, and you know what? I want to go to Oz again. There might be another cyclone, so what do we have to do to put it into place so that we don't have to worry about another cyclone? And there may be a cyclone, we don't know. So I don't know that this policy's going to resolve that for us.
No, but it gives everybody guidance and understanding as to who's in charge. And so I think the best way to understand it is, when two partners don't agree, who's in charge? If the superintendent's in charge, then the school committee's giving up its authority and need to actually be able to be responsible for its budget.
But isn't that decided by state statute? Who's, I mean, the school committee ultimately has that authority?
Well, right, so I'm saying, given, given that we're in charge all along, we shouldn't have a policy that directs us that, where we become subservient to, to what's possible. And that, on a, on a, on an operating basis, yes, we work with the administration very closely, and they, they do most of the work, but it doesn't mean that they're in charge.
Is, is, is the, could we solve this with a sentence that goes before this paragraph, whatever it's going to end up looking like, that says that the school committee is ultimate, owns, responsible, whatever the word is, for the district budget?
That, my mind?
Yes.
That's a great idea, because all you need to do is just reiterate what the three tenants by statute were in charge of, right, which is, you know, superintendent, budget. And so if we just reiterate that point that's on there, if that makes everybody feel better that the school committee's responsibility is in, you know, list that part of the statute, incorporate that in there, and then move forward with that. Does that work, Mark? Or, do you know what I mean? It defines that, and...
I think he's thinking ownership versus responsibility.
Well, we do. We own it. We own it, period. It doesn't matter what this annual budget says about our delegating this or that. It's not the surrendering of any rights, because that is our responsibility as a school committee. And I'm with, in theory, I mean, we're on the same page. I mean, neither one of us want that situation coming back.
We're delegating responsibility in that next paragraph.
But again, if it's delegated to the finance subcommittee, then we're part of that.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's not, we're talking about taking that out.
Oh, I thought...
That's, you've got to be careful.
Are we? I thought we were putting it back in.
No, we were bringing that in. We were putting finance subcommittee in there.
And then it becomes, is it before the "with" or after the "with"?
So can, can...
I would propose, go, we, I visit the policy committee.
Yeah, you, you will visit the policy committee again. Finance and policy, you guys decide what you want to do and bring back a final one, because we could just keep talking in circles here, and we're not going to get there.
I think we're, we're, we're on this, we have the same foundation.
And I think you hurt everybody's opinion on what it is, on what it is that we're looking for.
Sure. All right.
You and Mark.
There we go.
Financing.
No, it's semantics. We'll work it out. There's, I'm sure there, there's wording in there that will achieve...
Okay, so we're going to move on from this. We're, 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 we're going to move on. The people in their school district.
The people in the school district.
There's really, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the minor edits in this policy? So there really isn't anything, Neil, right?
Yep.
Okay. So it looks like we've, we've got to send back the online communication policy, so we could review that, and the annual budgets needs to go back again, correct?
Yes.
That and five.
And then, are people prepared to approve J J H, D N, and A V?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we accept those three. Is this a second reading?
It is a second. No, this is, we can go to vote. This is, this has already been first.
Okay. So I've moved those three.
To accept. J J H, overnight field trips and student travel, D N, committing funds...
A V, the people in their school district.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kathy, second, and Nan, Lynn. Although, any questions, comments before we move? All right, all those in favor? Lynn, are you in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Lynn? Okay.
Have a comment about what you're not happy with?
Something doesn't feel right, but that's fine.
Okay. So Neil, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, that was the most contentious thing we've had in a while.
I know, right? All right, Mark, are you ready to talk about the budget schedule proposal?
Uh, yes. So...
If not, we're going to move on.
So the discussion, the general discussion at the finance committee and the shape, the skeleton shape of calendar, we recommend, and we very much invite comment and critique and revision on this, is moving, is to, for the superintendent and the administration to be discussing internally their budget process, starting as early as, as August, so that a preliminary fairly consolidated budget is put forward around November first. So there's an object that exists, which is known to be not accurate, because numerous things change between that time and around March. And that workshop and first report out of a fairly solid budget happened more or less mid-January, and we picked out for 2017, January 18th, is the report out of the budget for full deliberation by the school committee.
So do you have a straw man for...
And then around March first hearing date, more or less as appropriate, so that budget could be approved, or have slapped to be approved by the targeted date of March 15th, for the, in accordance with this district agreement.
So...
So just to reiterate, key dates, November first, preliminary, known to be not accurate budget, that gets viewed both by the finance committee and the school committee at large. Report out of a detailed budget about January 18th of the coming year, with the beginning of workshops with the school committee. And then hearing more or less in the vicinity of March first, in advance of the deadline of March 15th, for the approval, final approval of the budget. And so very much, you know, want to know what people think about good and bad about that, so a schedule for, a skeleton schedule for working on budget process.
So before we start commenting on it, because you gave us three dates, is there a way for you guys to sit down and, and scope that out a little bit more? I mean, I don't think it's difficult, Kathy?
I'm looking at the budget process workflow that Capitier had developed, and I think that if, if not exactly like that, but something along those lines, would be useful for planning, but also for illustrating the process, to me, but probably a lot of people too. The other thing I'm thinking about, Mark, is that if it's, if it's not complete until March first, what really, what have we really changed? Shouldn't the end date be before March first? Because that's just doing the same old thing.
That's the approval. That's the final approval.
After we've had the opportunity of a month and a half for us to work with it, say, you know, January 15th to March first. Similarly, to where we had a lot of work that we did as a school committee for about six to eight weeks this year.
Second week of January, the budget's out, we start talking about workshop.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's...
So the, yeah, the March first is the public hearing?
Well, before the, it has to be approved by the 15th, so that's, all right, just so that we...
But we would be discussing that.
And the presumption is the budget is pretty solid at March first. We have a lot of agreement on it, and then that's a good opportunity for it to be a public, opportunity for the world to have a solid budget to comment on in a public hearing sense.
So, so what can we expect by, and what is the date in January you're looking at?
I think January 18th aligns with our meeting schedule.
So you're going to work backwards from that, to make sure that the things that have to happen, to happen, and the information you use there, so that by the middle of January, we have a pretty good idea of where we're at?
Right, and part of the proposal is that a, an inaccurate but rough preliminary budget come forth at, around November first, so that people know what key issues are for the coming year, even though everyone knows that they're not going to be accurate. We have a grip on something that's discussable far, far in advance of where we then will talk about things in previous years. And so it's possible to have a particular conversation where we know that we've got issues of... issues that have surfaced as a consequence of having a comprehensive-
I would still like to see us have some kind of a flow chart, something that shows the process, shows the process.
And that, that would be after we've had the milestones identified. So to your point, yes. But what I'd really like to see before that, because we've got to get there-
Yep.
-is to start to flesh this out a little bit more with more definitive milestones. If everybody feels good about November 1st, January 18th, and March 1st, then what has to happen before November 1st in order-
Exactly.
So you've got more, you've got gaps to fill in, right?
Sure. So I'm just looking for key milestones, so that we know we've got something that we can work on collectively, administration and school committee.
So how about it?
So speculating, the administration superintendent's going to be talking with principals and department heads July and August to start gathering information, what's changing this year and what's not.
Right. Do you understand, that's fine. You don't have to define it right now. Do you understand, I think what Kathy's saying is well, well-mentioned in that there's already, if we're looking for what are those-
Right.
-milestones, flesh it out. But to talk about the dates, other than these three dates, we're not going to be able to get it in our heads without seeing it on paper.
So I'm basically looking to say, do these major milestones make sense to you-
Right.
-in terms of figuring out the details that go with all that?
So are you guys good with these three milestone dates, so that they can go back and work on it a little bit more?
And likewise, we invite comment from George and Kurt, to the extent that you think positively or negatively about these dates. And I don't really like that. Yep.
So why don't we work with, and when do you want to get this nailed down?
I think as, as Brooke feels she's able to commit to this, I'd like to have something pretty solid, you know, June, so that everybody knows the work is ahead of them.
I'll let you-
It might even require us, finance subcommittee, getting together with administration, and maybe department heads or whoever, putting together the budgets, and having like a roundtable or something to get, you know, that total buy-in from everybody.
Okay. You've got to work through the superintendent.
Exactly.
Yeah. Have the superintendent talk with his folks, and then bring it back to you guys.
Keeps.
Keeps, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So desirability of having an idea sooner or later, because it's all a lot of work, no matter how you, no matter where you locate it in the year.
Well, and you're in a year now where you're going to have, you're going to have a little bit of a gap, right? Because you're going to be bringing someone new in to manage the budget. So, so this could all be great, great discussion-
Great theory. Hard practice.
Right. So I think, I think working through Dr. Bates and have him work with superintendent-elect Clenching would be the way to handle it, rather than try to solve for it, because we can't right now. But I think if everybody's comfortable with these major milestones, then have at it.
I think that is consensual point of view, and then continue working on it.
Yep, and start fleshing it out. Take it to the next level. Okay. I'm going to jump down, if it's okay with everyone. Let's do the Masbo report, priority items, after we get the rest of these items done. I think they can kind of move through this. Let's talk about our subcommittee reports. Finance. Mark?
We've been continuing to talk about some year-end topics. We're, and asked George to give us a memo, which he provided, giving first, first estimate on what are likely surplus is going to be running for the year, and attempting to do some thinking about how that stands versus our budget, and how that relates to our fiscal 17 budget. So that discussion is continuing, and will surface, I think, at our next school committee meeting, to just begin to bring awareness as to some of the details at the year-end for fiscal 17, fiscal 16 budget.
So will you be ready for June 15th meeting? Is that what you're saying?
I think so. And other activity, we are likely to be discussing and perhaps bring out some draft policies on the financial side that will show up at the policy committee for further, further I think that covers the major topics.
Anything else on finance?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I want to get some verification. I understand that. Well, I learned today that, can I say it?
I don't know what you're saying. I think I know what you're saying. It's not, I mean, it's public information, I guess. It's not probably desirable to say right here and now, just because I think that person would like to tell some of the people, but-
What is that?
Okay. Well, based on a situation that I learned today, I'm concerned about some information that we haven't been able to receive yet, which deals with the technology, specifically the IP cameras, and a review that was taking place to, way back to September, following full circle. We had, we had the break-in at the high school, and we had the talk about, you know, the enhancement of the images, all this stuff, and then Chief Wa, now acting chief then, but now Chief Nelson had responded, you know, that he didn't think we had enough cameras, because they didn't, they failed to capture certain things. So we had a local resident who volunteered to go in and take a look, that is an expert at this. And then we were going to get follow-up on this particular report, which we didn't get. And a couple of things that came through on the warrant kind of triggered all this. Where I'm going with this is that we may have entered into a contract that we're not necessarily aware of, and I'm not positive on that, but I've been told to the tune of $100,000, $150,000, and I'm not sure if that's the case, but I can't find it in any of the budget specifically for upcoming year. So, and I can't find it in any of the budget readouts or any of the minutes yet. I can see where it's referred to, we're looking at things, but-
So the, so the question is, there's a, for FY 17?
Yep. It was determined that there was in fact need, I guess, I haven't seen the report, but there was in fact need for cameras.
Is there a contract?
On their security thing.
There's not a contract.
So there's not a contract.
So what, where-
So when we talked to finance subcommittee this morning, I thought we had discussed that there was $50,000 that was allocated in the budget for cameras. And that's what I'm not clear on. And that's my concern, because of the information I learned today, it's very timely that we find this information out prior to-
You're nodding your head.
It's sounding so correct right now.
Share with us what you, because I think we're all a little bit in the dark, so if you could elaborate on what we're talking about here, that would be helpful.
It's one, was determined, didn't know whether there was a contract. There is no-
I didn't think there was, because I hadn't seen it, and just didn't follow the processes, but, you know, Neil had some information there was, but I since checked, and as I suspected, there is not a contract.
So nothing has been done?
Well, a lot's been done to a contract. The vendor, last fall, when this, all these issues came up, a local vendor was referred by Neil to Bill Cleary. Bill met with that vendor, and the vendor was very helpful to, you know, very knowledgeable of what was going on. And he came together with a plan, a proposal, for what we could do for the high school to resolve, not resolve, to improve the camera situation. And that's where it stands. There is no report, there's a, there's a plan, but there's no report. There's no like, you know, file and document that says, you know, current status and things like that. There's a proposal as to how we could improve the situation, as was discussed in the budget process. The, you know, the total cost of that would probably be in the $150,000 range. Based on the email that Neil had sent last week, requiring about the $280 service call to replace a camera, and some of the verbiage in there, Mr. Cleary told the contractor, or was telling, told the contractor, I believe, or certainly going to tell the contractor, that, you know, this is understanding the scope, and there's still like to look at additional options before committing, and, you know, at some point, that's a decision the committee will have to make. It's on the state bid list, so it wouldn't have to be bid, it could be done, but-
So you're down a path, and you've left me behind. So I'm standing on the platform, and I want to be on your train, so you're going to have to help me understand what the heck you just said. So, so do we, is there, are there plans to go out to bid on a contract for additional equipment? And if the answer is yes, what's the status of it, and what's the amount that was earmarked in the budget for it?
Okay. It's two different questions.
Three. But go ahead.
There has been a review of the system and a proposal by the person who reviewed the system made to Mr. Cleary.
Okay.
There has been no commitment to that.
Is there a dollar amount on the proposal?
Yes, I'm not 100% sure of this one. Pretty confident it's in the vicinity of $150,000.
Okay.
And the financing would be over three years, so there's $50,000 in the FY 17 budget that would pay towards that particular thing. However, the district has no commitment to it. If the district at some point would like to commit to it, it is on the state bid list, and we could commit to it without any further bidding. If the district would like to essentially utilize that information, I guess, for lack of the term, I think it's very well described, but would like to use that information and go off for a broader base bid, and look at other contractors or other bidders, we certainly could do that too, that would be up to the school committee. But before we were, this is why I was quite confident that there was no contract in place, because if we were to sign a three-year contract, we would bring that contract to the school committee for a year, much like we, you know, as you recall, last year, we brought a lawnmower contract to the school committee for like $5,000 a year. So I assure you, we wouldn't be signing a three-year contract for $50,000 a year. That's why I didn't think there was-
Well, I got confused, I guess, this afternoon, when we're talking, we had budgeted $50,000 for something that we don't have a contract for, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we have a budget, we have a lot of things budgeted that we intend to do. That's, you know, that's why we budget, but we don't have, and we can do it. We can do it. But that will be up to the committee.
So currently, there's $50,000 earmarked in the FY 17 budget for-
For maintenance part of the facilities budget, yes.
It's in the facilities budget, but it's specifically earmarked for security cameras. Okay. Did anybody get that?
Security system.
The warrant article, the warrant item was just for replacement?
It was for $280, so it was the repair of a camera, but that brought me full circle back to where we were. So if we have a plan, and we know whether it goes into executive session, because it deals with security issues or not, we haven't been, we haven't been given that. There was a non-disclosure agreement that was made to be signed by this individual, which only employees of the school district were able to review this. So we, as a school committee, cannot review this information. So all I'm asking for is that we can have an understanding of what the needs are, which apparently somebody knows there's needs, because there've been $50,000 budgeted for something that we don't have a contract for. But we don't know specifically where-
Wait a second. Can I ask a question? You said something bunky.
I think a lot of-
The school committee cannot look at the NDA? Why would that be?
No, you can still get the NDA.
It was listed as an employee of the school district, and we're not-
Given the fact that they are working on the security system, they, I haven't seen, I have not seen the plan on the report. I haven't seen the plan.
Me either.
Right, I haven't either, so I just wanted to be clear. I have not seen the plan. I've not seen the NDA document, to my recollection. I may have seen that six, eight months ago. It was simply because he's working in a security system, we never worked with him before. We asked him to sign a contract, saying he only discussed the, you know, the aspects of the high school security system with designated employees in the school system.
But what's the risk of discussing it with school committee?
It's not permitted.
That falls under one of the 10 executive sessions, right?
Yeah. That would be a problem. That just means you can't discuss it with people in the soccer field.
Right. But ultimately, it turned into not being a discussion with the school committee at all, despite repeated attempts. And so we're still at this thing where I started asking for it again, and I'm still not getting any response from the facilities director with regards to this.
And there'd be no problem.
So what do you need that you're not getting?
What I need to know is, hey, we committed ourselves to looking into this way back when, when everything was a big crisis, right? And to go full circle, foreclosure of the year, we, this is something that's been out there, and honestly, off my radar, because of budget hitting and everything else. But then that silly little warrant thing kind of brought me full circle again, and I started asking questions, still not getting anything on there. So there is technically, if there's a plan that's put together, somebody has to know that there's certain issues or something needs to be done, right?
A plan? What plan? You mean this, this report?
Proposal. If there's a proposal and a plan put together for what's going to be out there.
Is there a proposal?
There's a, again, I have not seen it, okay?
Wait a second. Wait a second. Is there a proposal?
From what I understand from Bill, that he had, they have a schematic plan proposal idea of how they would address the situation if this vendor were to be selected. It has not moved to the level of contract, so I don't know if it's, every i is dotted and t is crossed, but there is, there is a plan.
So the reason that we are interested in looking at this is not to weigh in on it, because we don't want to do the administration's job, it's just as an FYI?
Well, it's, it's an FYI, to follow full circle from where we were. It's to obviously understand what the budgetary impact is going to be on this. I get that we have $50,000 allocated. How much are we going to need? We never saw this contract or anything. $50,000 allocated is not $150,000, which means this is a year-over-year expense that we're entering into. We have zero visibility on this. We've already been down this road before, and I don't want to go down this particular road on this item. And so I'm looking for that visibility into what we're incurring. And if it's $50,000, I don't care if it's $100,000 a year, we need the security, obviously, to keep the kids safe, but we also need to see what we're spending our money on and understand that.
So I'm wondering two things. One, is appropriate for us to have a view into that? If the answer is yes, we would want to do that in executive session, because I'm certain if there's an NDA assigned to this, and it concerns the security of the buildings, we do not want to do that in a public session.
Correct. And honestly, I'm not looking for schematics of where things are going to be placed. I want to know, we need X number of cameras for this purchase, for this-
But that's still-
And that, right, I get that, but do you, I'm looking for where this is going to go with the budgetary implications and what we're dealing with, rather than if we just list this under miscellaneous this or that. There's nothing that's listed in the budget that shows out, that bears out on the budget that was given to us as a separate line item for security cameras. There's miscellaneous this, there's-
Okay. So isn't-
And so what I'm saying is something's in there that we don't have eyes on, and that's a problem.
But I'm not, I'm not clear on what it is we want, what the ask is. Is the ask, I want to know what's in the budget and what it's for, and how it was determined? Or is the ask, I want, I want to know what we're asking for through this proposal that was received?
No, I want to know the budgetary side of things, because that's, that's our wheelhouse, okay? I don't really care what the administration's specifically putting things here or there.
So there's no, why wouldn't this be able to be handled in the finance subcommittee discussions?
It can be. It's just a budget, that's simple. But I, you know, I misunderstood, I guess. And I don't necessarily own problems either, it's really up to the school committee. I thought you wanted a broader report, for lack of a better term, I don't mean a broader report, to the committee either, about what the money was going to be spent for. I thought you wanted that.
No, I want to report it. The report out was that, because we dealt with this with a repeater, we dealt with this, you know, that was $60,000, whatever, that Chief Warren, Chief Nelson came back with this for the cost of the repeater. You know, we're looking, we have a safety committee now that we're talking into Raptor systems and all this other stuff, and this is another element, but we have dollar figures for all those things. This is an element where we're actually, looks like we're starting to commit, but again, we don't have visibility into what we're committing. And that's all I'm asking for.
That is a slightly different question. We have $50,000 on the budget, that's about what we think it would cost. We have not committed at all.
Okay. So it sounds like, can you ensure that- So it sounds like, can you ensure that he's getting what he's asking for and maybe there needs to be translation, I don't know, but I think what Neil's asking for doesn't sound unreasonable to me.
Do you want it through the financial subcommittee first, or do you want it through the committee?
It doesn't matter, financial subcommittee is fine, I mean, that, that doesn't matter, and then-
And then you can report out the-
And then specifically, you, you want the, the proposal that has been-
Yeah, I don't care about schematics and human there, you know what I'm saying, so we need to, we need to get whatever, switches, we need IP cameras, we need-
Based on this vendor-
Right.
What was the proposal?
Right.
Period.
Right. And if it's $50,000 we have budgeted here, it's a little, it's, and I'm not saying anyone's intentionally being so, but in my mind, it's a little misleading because $50,000 is not $150,000.
Right.
If we don't know what that proposal is, we don't understand that, and that was never reported out during the, it might, I may be mistaken, can't find it anywhere in the minutes or the notes, when facilities reported out the various investments that they're making, that was not included on there, and that, and frankly, that needs to be on there.
I think you'll find it on the five-year plan that Bill, Bill Clary-
The IP cameras?
The-
It's on the detailed plan for the planned maintenance at the high school, it's on that detailed plan.
Okay, so-
With the hundred-
Mark, you've got, you've got to put that on your next finance subcommittee and get the man what he's asking for, because it doesn't sound unreasonable and it doesn't sound inappropriate.
Materials and minutes, we don't have anything that's-
And then Neil, you, you, as long as the information that you're gathering-
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't be an executive sex, executive session to protect the security of the schools? Will you report that out to us at the next meeting on that? I think we could do that.
That should be done in executive session of the finance committee.
Okay.
All right?
All right, that's fine, I'm in, yeah.
Okay, so your next.
Excuse me, what was that?
No, I just was trying to work out the logistics of who could present that to the finance committee.
Well, you guys can work that out afterwards, we don't need to do that. Okay. So, Neil, thank you. George, thank you. Mark?
I have no further, finance committee.
You better to report. Okay, thank you. Kathy, personnel.
The personnel subcommittee met to revise the job descriptions and set salary levels for PPS director and manager of HR and director of facilities. Did Alita give you copies?
Yes.
Because what, oh, you have them-
I'm sorry.
Because what is posted is not-
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so.
Why don't you just pass them around and talk while you're here?
Well, people need to look, I got, I got, I read it.
It's an exam. I don't know what it is tonight.
Oh, this is the, yes, director, so read that one first and then have any questions. Oh, sure, sorry. Here you go, here, oh, sorry, here you go. Why do you even have that one?
Okay, so give me the rest of them, when you're ready, I'll just pass them out so we can talk and-
I have nothing to say, you don't have to read them.
Okay.
Is this a draft thing or a published object?
We have, you can-
It wasn't published yet.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the Dr. Bates had done collective comparative data from several communities that helped us determine salary range for the PPS director of pupil personnel services, the range is 115 to 125, and it's, it's pretty much a mid-range for the other districts that we looked at. And as you see the other job descriptions, the salary ranges in those job descriptions, for HR and director of facilities reflects the same evaluation of data, comparative data for salaries for those positions from a variety of districts. These are the ones?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do you got now?
So the facilities manager.
Okay, this is facilities manager, you are.
Well, it's actually director of-
Director of facilities management, sorry.
Nope.
And then here are the other ones, manager of human resources.
You have those, right?
I have them.
I would just like to comment on the formatting and-
I know. I know, I got the hint, I'll be formatting too.
It's got a nice heading, same.
Susan, you're gonna format tonight for me.
You're not gonna mess with Lancaster anymore, okay? There's three of us.
Nobody's ever messed with Lancaster, do your thing.
Okay, I just, you know, I imagine people are reading through them, if you have any
Do you want to start talking through it real quickly, just so they can catch up?
Talking through what? They have to look at these and then we have to look through them?
Is there anything substantial that's changed at all?
I think you'd have to look at the, I think, well, the, the director of special education, the position has been changed to director of pupil services, and I think that was in consultation with the Clancy, do you want to speak to that?
That's correct. Yes, Super Channel, like Clancy, felt very strongly that the 504 program should be under this director, and so that has been added to, as part of the job description.
And, uh, do you want to take that?
No, I'll head her out.
Okay.
I could if you want, but I think-
Well, with regard to the human resources position, we changed it from director of human resources to manager, I believe that several years ago, it was a manager of human resources position, and I think looking at what the performance responsibilities are and changing some of the responsibilities, I believe that currently payroll is involved, and there is some other work that is done on interview committees, some of those things have been omitted, so we think that the position will be best served with a manager as opposed to a director. Do you want to add anything?
Nope, I think that made sense.
And then the salary range for that is $95,000 to $110,000. One of the other things that we put in there relative to qualifications.
Educator assistant.
Yeah.
Evaluations.
Experience with the education evaluation system and related technology for that. And then the director of facilities management position, I don't think that we changed too much with regard to that, it's pretty comprehensive. The salary range for that is $80,000 to $95,000, again, when we compare it to other districts, that's pretty much the range in keeping with the district, like Hisho, and that represents a decrease from the current salary level of that position now.
So I have a question on the facilities.
Yes.
Is current occupant of that office a professional engineer, a PE? Is the facilities director currently a PE, a professional engineer?
He's an engineer, yes.
I ask, because it might be desirable to include this as a desirable qualification to have somebody who's got that.
I don't have type of engineer, I can't, I can't.
Right, so PE can be a lot of varieties of engineers.
It's in there that it's a preferred engineering or construction management. Would you prefer, say, project engineering or project engineer, Mark?
It's great that we've got a construction supervisor license, that's highly desirable. I think it's, you know, an optional thing that we, it would be discretionary for us to decide that we like somebody who has a PE attached to their name, and I think it might be desirable for us to say that we find that kind of person possibly more attractive.
Where would you add that?
So in, in qualifications somehow is desirable.
Do you have a P E or construction management?
You have a P E. That's gonna take a lot of people.
Preferred project engineer or construction manager.
Well, a PE is a professional engineer, you actually take a test to get a license on this, yeah?
Right.
And this other P is preferred engineering, is you're going to speak of engineering. Okay, so he wants a P E, he wants a stamp, he wants to be able to stamp by the numbers. Is that, that's what he's asking?
So I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying it's required, but I think it's desirable for us to say desirable in some fashion in how it's-
Does the salary range still, does that hold?
I don't know, actually.
And what's the increase in the amount that we would need in order to satisfy that designation? Is that designation desirable, valuable enough to warrant that?
Right, so what you get, we have facilities here about $20 million bucks, and so you get somebody who's capable of dealing with architects and other engineers and has a stamp and really understands, you know, and is qualified to put his stamp on drawings, and that kind of person is suitable and perhaps well worth the money for a facility such as ours.
And when you say well worth the money, what are you talking about?
Meaning, it could be, you know, whether it's $5,000 or $10,000 more, perhaps no, no thousand dollars more, that having that kind of skill and experience and licensure is a valuable thing for an entity like us who has a lot of mechanical, electrical, and structural systems going on, and it means that we can, we have someone who has judgment and is able to avoid taking some services out of our own staff, thus to escape from having to bring people in. So that's, that's the kind of trade-off you get, you get somebody who has more experience, you could end up saving some money because they are capable on their own of doing some things that might have to go outside for.
Is there any way that we could quickly find out what districts will have facilities, director of facilities, what the qualifications are, or if they have that?
Well, the need is pretty immediate, right?
Yeah.
So, Dr. Bates, do you want to speak to that?
So for example-
Wait a second.
We understand which-
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Will you speak to the need, the urgency of the need?
These need to be posted tomorrow.
Right.
The only issue I have with the protections you-
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, that's right.
Is, you bring out a PE, they're taking on responsibility by using a stamp, and you pay them for that, because many pay for insurance and real licenses, if we were to have a job that we need to have insurance and you have that stamp on that, I want somebody else taking that responsibility.
Right, so I'm not saying they have to take the responsibility, but they understand and have had that experience.
But if you hire them with that stamp, you want that stamp, you're paying for that responsibility.
Sure, I get it.
And that insurance and that license.
Sure.
And I don't want the district taking on that responsibility.
So I'm not saying they have to take, put on their stamp, I'm saying they've got the experience and they understand.
I know, and I understand, I get you totally, we do, we just don't want the district to take it on.
So let me ask you a question. As this stands, is this absolutely not serving our needs?
Okay.
This is director of facilities management. If it doesn't, if it, if it, if it could have served our needs and we can post this now and see what Dr. Bates and Brooke Clancy want to do, I can't do that whole thing, by the way, I'm just going with it, okay? Then I'd like to give them the opportunity to then come back and ask us to revise if they find that they're not, the pool isn't where they need it to be, especially because we don't have the information that we need to make an assessment right now and this thing has to get posted.
I think this meets the needs, I mean, it's pretty standard with what was in there, there hasn't been anything that was substantially changed, a couple of things have been clarified.
And Jennifer, you have some, some peripheral experience with, what are your thoughts on this?
Before I would make it a qualification, I'd want to see what savings would be possible if you have the person versus, I mean, how much does a district really spend on outside contract services for that kind of situation? Because you, Lynn's right, you're gonna pay for this, and I would like to see that there's a cost benefit to the district for doing that, and I would also need, as Lynn pointed out, what is the district's liability-
Bam, there you go.
Okay. Going forward. So, so I think I'm good with it as it stands, if we find that we need to reassess, given what the applicant pool is-
Yeah.
Then we can.
The only thing I don't see in here, and I may have missed it, and I apologize if I did, with project management, is that actually listed in here?
Construction renovation.
Boy, okay.
Maybe all construction renovation, it's the third bullet.
Yep, okay.
Okay. So, Mark, I think that's, unless, I mean, I think that's where-
Sure, and just to help people out to perspective, a, often a building inspector or a building commissioner for a town will be a professional engineer because, you know, they're dealing with facilities and architects and so forth and know how to read plans and they have-
It doesn't mean that we're not gonna do that, it means, this is based on some of the folks, and I know that you're one of them in the room, that have some experience in this function, if this is gonna serve the need, put it out there, if it turns out that the pool's not where it needs to be, take it back, revise it, and then resubmit.
Yep.
Okay? You have one more, please?
I think we did them all.
Oh, you did them, you did them both?
Yeah.
Personal services?
We did, did that one first.
All right, are there any changes to any of these job postings or salary ranges?
I don't know about the, do they have contracts?
Three-year contracts?
And then is that part of the job description, Lynn, that'll be part of the contract?
No, no, in the very end it says it.
It is there?
Yes.
I can see that.
Okay, I see.
And then to leave for the manager of human resources and director of pupil resources, are we clear that this is a three-town district and multiple building?
Yes.
It's-
Hmm.
Well, it's the children's-
It's a school district.
Right. Well, facilities, I don't know that that needs to be called out.
It does specify town administrators plural.
Say it again?
It does specify town administrators plural. Well, it tells you that it's more than one, that anybody who's gonna apply is gonna-
Do their homework and-
I just wanted to make sure.
All right, so you need a motion-
A motion to-
To, to accept these three job descriptions as presented.
Second.
Director of facilities management, Lynn, manager of human resources, and director of pupil personnel services.
Did you just state with the salary range?
This, this-
Salary range.
Job description and salary.
Yes, and salary range.
So you, as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Kathy, thank you, thank you, Mark. Jennifer, we owe you. Okay. Neil, is there a policy report?
Yeah, so, I mean, we met, we went over some others, year-end report out is going to be forthcoming in the next, so that's all written and done, we went over that, that's pretty much what we did in the last, now, policy subcommittee meeting. That's pretty much what we did for the last now policy subcommittee meeting, and we'll give you the update next time.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to move through the next few items. Subcommittee assignments, Mark? So, because we, we have a new superintendent coming on within a month. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. The change, the biggest change, and I'm going to suggest that we, we move with what I've got here, unless there's some issues with it. And then, within the next month to two months, we have to do our goal-setting session with Brooke Clutchy, which we will do. And I think at that point, the discussion on some of the liaison assignments may tweak what we have. But we know we need policy represented, and you know that I think it's really important to have all three towns represented on each of the major subcommittees. So policy, finance, and personnel, again, will be represented by each of the towns. So for policy, again, it's Neil, Nicole, and Susan Reardon. On finance, it's Neil, Mark, and Jennifer. On personnel, Kathy, Lynn, myself. And I'm proposing that we create a collective bargaining temporary subcommittee, which will allow us to start the process and become a little bit more familiar, and then versus not having or only having one individual working on collective bargaining, I would prefer that we again, and there's, there's a mistake there, that says L, but obviously I'm Bolton and Jen is Lancaster and Kathy Stowe, but again, we're representing.
Kathy's Lancaster, too.
Kathy's Lancaster, well, we're trying, like, to represent the three towns. But if I, I'm just worried that I'm going to overextend the Stowe people, because they've got big fish to fry this year. So, moving into the liaison assignments, I'm really not changing anything, I know audit advisory is going to be busy, because the RFP is going to be prepared and distributed. Lynn, are you going to stay on the Mabel Hale Fund?
I didn't ask you, what is that?
Okay.
You don't know about Mabel Hale?
It's a, is it a scholarship?
No.
Or grant?
Yeah, it's a very small trust fund, relatively small, that, that we can apply for money for, we haven't done it for a couple of years, we used to do our dance program at Hale Fund. I don't know if it's available to Hale and Center or just Hale, I just don't know. But we haven't done anything with it the last couple of years.
But we should get together and make sure that we stay in touch with.
Sure.
Mabel's.
Mabel's family. CPAC, I'd like to keep Nicole there. Technology, Neil and Lynn. Space task force, I know that the task force itself, as it was defined, is kind of now fallen away, because the work was done, but we've got to decide how we move into the next phase. So that's going to end up tweaking, but I'm not sure exactly what we're going to do with it yet, so I don't want to make any changes. And then Susan on the emergency response safety committee. I'm sure there are many more assignments, we can come up with and committees, and we've got to sit down and figure out which committee is just an administrative committee, which committee is actually a liaison, and make that determination. But I would like to wait until, excuse me, Brooke Clutchy comes on board, and the good news is that most of these aren't going to be meeting through the summer, so that will give us some time to work through it. However, the subcommittees will likely be meeting on and off through the summer, so at least everybody will be in place. The reason I'd like to keep the subcommittees, the formal ones, the way they are now, is because people have really been drinking from the fire hose this year, and the folks that are on the subcommittees have learned a lot, and I don't want to lose that institutional knowledge. If you really don't want to be on one of these subcommittees and you'd really like to try something else, let me know. Otherwise, this is my recommendation. Any questions? Jennifer?
I'm good.
Susan? Neil, do you have questions?
If you ask me, I'm always going to have a question, so just skip me.
No, I asked, I want to know.
I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, wait, no, no. Lynn? And Mark? Really? Okay, so can I get a motion?
I'll move to accept the subcommittee designations as presented.
In a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Neil, you'll grab it.
Neil, got it, you got it.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Superintendent's report?
Last Friday, we had a full day, section 504 workshop at Hale Middle School, twenty-four, forty-four staff members attended. The workshop was presented by attorney Thomas Nuttall from Nuttall, McAvoy, and Joyce, who are out of Marshfield. He also had, I had sent him all of our current district 504 documents, he's reviewed them and given suggestions on how to revise them. He looked at our life-threatening allergy policy and protocols. He provided an overview of the 504 process for everyone, and provided the staff with some hypothetical situations and discussions, and reviews, review of some current legal cases regarding eligibility's and so forth. Feedback that I got was very positive, that it was a great day, he really provided a lot of information for the staff, so I think we're well on the way of revamping the 504 policy here that will also follow through with the judge's subcommittee on the 504 policies. You have a third quarterly report from the Asma Valley Collaborative, excuse me, and you can go through it, looking at the collaborative statutes and regulations and oversight, board of directors activities, the Asma Valley Collaborative updates, the programs and consultation services that they provide, professional development, state and national engagement activities that they do. And I've been meeting with superintendent, a lot Clutchy, excuse me. And working on transition activities and plans, and providing her with a focus series of concerns and updates on current activities within the district. This week, I'll be meeting with her on Wednesday and Friday, she'll be, also be meeting with all the principals on Friday, she's meeting with period, different people individually. And, let's see what the last thing is. Florence Sawyer School had students that participated in the Math Olympia program, and over the past five months, they, under the supervision of Ms. Karen Walsh-Fortin and Pamela Carpenter, the thirteen of the students won some national awards in Division E for grades four through six. The gold pin is awarded to those in the 98th percentile. Eli Croto had a score of 23 out of 25 points, and Jay Fleming with a score of 22 out of 25 points. The embroidered patch is an award to those in the top 20% to 50%, and those participants were Maxau and Sarah Listwone, Nina Ambrose, Sophia Jacobson, Camden Dutz, Yichen, Hallie Farmer, Catherine Adalata, Agamajat Singh Kujur, Grace O'Leary, Daniel Abi, and Andy Hess. So we congratulate all of them on their participation in this. And they certainly enjoyed my visit to the high school seniors' last day.
You're brave.
Full day. To observe their, during lunchtime, their activities and their creative interactions. But it was, no, seriously, it was, they were well behaved, they had a lot of fun, and it was, it was great to watch.
Did you see the sign that they put up the last day at school? Those seniors, a group of seniors, put up this huge sign that said, "School for Sale", and stated in the front, it was, it was funny. Considering some of the pranks we've had in the past, it was pretty good. Thank you, Dr. Bates. All right, any correspondence? Nope? Consent agenda, unless there are any issues, we can consider the minutes for May 18th. Approved? Okay. I'm going to give you a couple of items for, and you probably want to take some of these down for our next agenda. I would like to ask you, if we could, add yet one more, I promise I won't ask for another one, meeting June 29th. And the reason is that we've got a lot of housekeeping to do to finalize and close out the year. So, it would be a regular school committee meeting on June 29th, beginning at 6:00 PM. I don't anticipate it's going to be a big meeting, but we've got to get through Masbo tonight, we're probably going to have one more discussion on Masbo, and then we've got other items. So can, are there issues with the 29th? How many cannot do it? Jen? Jennifer? Anyone else?
That's Wednesday, is it?
Yes.
It's fine with me.
Kathy, you're good, Susan, you're good, Neil?
Yeah.
And Lynn? So Jennifer, what we'll do is, we'll get the agenda up early, and then if there are Masbo lingering items, you send them to me, I'll represent them for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So can someone make a motion to add a regular school committee meeting on June 29th?
I will, we had.
Sorry. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jen.
Second.
Second, so, so Jennifer moved the motion, Neil seconded it.
No, no, Mark seconded it.
I mean, sorry, Mark seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, and thank you so much. June 8th, tri-town, in Stowe. The two items that I know of, one is a Masbo report out, they want to know what's in the report, what are we doing with it, where do we go from here? So we're going to have to speak to that, and also.
Set seven o'clock.
There was a request on.
Yes.
Excuse me?
I just wanted to know the time, seven.
There was also a request to report on progress for the NIASC effort that we need to deliver on by September, October of this year. And Dr. Bates has asked Dr. Graham to join us. A reminder that we have the collective bargaining workshop on July 7th, we now have a time for that, it will be here in the district offices, 6:00. MASC will be leading us through that effort.
So do you, do you want the collective bargaining subcommittee only for this, or do you want every?
No, no, full school committee, we all need to kind of know what to expect, and answer whatever questions we all have, and everybody get on the same page.
And can I make one suggestion?
Sure.
And I don't know if this is related, it's just my kind of random mind, but that committee for collective bargaining, perhaps we should also include the member from the town that will be part of the collective bargaining process?
It was part of the plan. So it was part of the plan, last time we spoke.
Say it again?
Last time we spoke, Mr. Bates was going to find out who was going to be doing that, who's going to ask around, and so that we would have that person for the seventh.
I think.
But on the subcommittee.
Is that on the tri-town agenda?
No, the subcommittee is a school committee subcommittee, there will be, there will be.
No, I think he's suggesting that the person who is coming, who's representing the three towns, comes to the workshop.
Comes to the workshop.
So that we have somebody.
Well, the workshop, no, and actually, I did mean the subcommittee.
Do you have any idea, is that on the tri-town agenda?
Would they be involved with the collective bargaining subcommittee? There's going to be a lot of discussion about collective bargaining in there.
No, the subcommittee is.
I get that.
The folks on the school committee who are identified to be on this broader collective bargaining committee. Does that make sense?
Which will include the town representative, whoever.
But that's what I'm asking, so are the meetings that they have for this collective bargaining subcommittee, they will include the town representative?
No, I'm just telling you, in what we just looked at for the subcommittees, those are the folks from the school committee who will be sitting on this collective bargaining committee. So they will not be reporting out in our subcommittee report outs, which are school committee report outs, they will be part of the broader collective bargaining committee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense to me, except for the town representative will be involved in that too, correct?
They will be involved in the bigger committee, not the school committee subcommittee.
I'm with you.
So the question was, is he attending the MASC collective bargaining workshop? Because I thought that.
My assumption was that they've been invited to come.
I don't know.
I thought Dr. Bates was going to help identify that person.
Well.
It's on the, I don't have a tri-town.
It is on the tri-town, all right.
So we should know by next week who that person is, and then I would suggest we invite that person to the.
To the July 7th, yep. Okay. All right, so back to the collective bargaining workshop, 6:00 here, July 7th, two hours. Okay? Self-assessment, okay. So we all have goals as a school committee, and each of our subcommittees have goals. And I am going to take the overarching goals and provide that to each of you. So, I don't know if you remember this document, but it's got our activities, it's each of the goals, the activities, the timing, and then we all need to figure out the status, did we achieve it, did we not achieve it, do we have to defer it? So we all need to do the overarching goals for the subcommittee, for the full school committee, and then each of the subcommittees need to look at your goals, and if you need them, chair of your subcommittees, I have what you committed to. You need to, in your subcommittee meetings, we need to go through these and define the same thing. Did you achieve the goal? Do you need to defer the goal for some reason? Or is it something that has to go back on the schedule, or did we not need to do it because something substantive changed? Okay? I would like for us to try to get that done. Is there a way to do it on the 15th of June?
I don't see why not.
You have a personnel subcommittee meeting?
Oh, we have to make one on the 13th.
All right, so you've got to set one up. Neil, do you have a policy subcommittee meeting between now and the 15th?
I honestly can't tell you at this point, I can put that up, but we've already done what you've asked, so.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about you, finance?
Finance, we've gone through our goals, and so we are substantially ready to report.
Oh, excellent, okay, so.
Okay, Lynn, can you do June 13th?
Okay, well, let's do that afterwards.
I can just do it right now.
No, let's do that afterwards. So, we'll put that on for 6:15, okay?
What time?
So, goal-setting session. I will work with Brooke Clutchy, hopefully I will talk to her on Friday to identify if, and when we can get those dates, because my fear is that as time goes on, we're going to lose everyone for vacations. And I already know, Susan gave me her availability when she's definitely going to be away, so if anyone has plans that they know of, just send them to me, don't tell me now, just send me an email with what your plans are. And we'll see if we can get that set up, because she's going to want to meet with us. Okay. And Kathy's working on the superintendent evaluation, when do you want?
That's right, I was supposed to mention that.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm meeting with Dr. Bates on Thursday, did you know that?
Yes, I did.
8:30 in the morning, and what, we had spoken about this at the personnel subcommittee, that I took the goals that he created in his transition plan, and I've aligned them with the standards of evaluation, and sort of modified the report out document. So, I'm going to, after I meet Dr. Bates and share with him the format and make sure we're on the same page and everything, I'm going to send it out to you, so that you can add your, anything you want to add to it. What you are to, if you respond to it, and I'll send you. What you are to, if you respond to it, and I'll send you instructions, I think, I'm thinking of doing a screencast, so that you can follow along and look at the document as I'm describing things on it. Any input that you have will go to Alita, and then Alita will provide it to me, and I'll have it for the personnel subcommittee on the 13th. So, it would be the, you would have to get it to Alita by June 9th, so that she could hopefully get it to me by June 10th, so I can compile it to be ready for the personnel subcommittee on the 13th.
So, you want this to be on the 6:15 school committee agenda?
Yes, yes, and I will explain, I will go over what I just said in an email, and send you the document, which I have an opportunity to go over with Dr. Bates.
Okay.
Now, they don't have to do it, right, or do they? No.
I don't know how.
No, that's okay.
I mean, you're welcome to, but...
In other districts, if someone had been on the committee and went off, they'd given them an opportunity, do you wanna contact Kathy Tierney, or do you want me to, to see if she wants to provide input or not?
You can call, contact, are you the chair of the subcommittee?
I'm just checking.
Yep, thank you.
Will do.
It's a good idea, actually. Okay, are we good? Anybody have any other agenda items? The next meeting. I think that's it, let's turn our attention to Masbo report. Okay. So, the last time that we met, we talked about everyone's top three priorities, and then we selected common priorities for the full school committee, and those were first technology, and then food services and revolving accounts, but I think that food services and revolving accounts are not the same thing. There's, how many revolving accounts, Neil? Fifty-three?
In every city.
Something crazy like that, so we need to talk about that. And then the budget schedule and the communication with the towns was the number three priority. So, let's do the five minutes again, each one of you, tell me what your, either your next three priorities are, or I'm gonna suggest another approach, because we gotta move through the rest of the document. So, these are the items that we didn't rate last time, but we, but were mentioned. E-rate, job descriptions and updating all the job descriptions. I heard somebody, something? Nobody. Facilities management and rentals, sped, the district improvement plan, we've got missing policies, I'm not sure that's something we need to address here, enrichment and extended day, school choice out, and accounts payable. So, those are some of the things that came up at the last meeting, that could certainly go on the report out, but I think in order to make it easy for the administration to do something with what we give them, we should try to stay as closely aligned as we can with the major sections of the report, because there are questions in each of the sections of recommendations. So, we've got this list, we've got our one, two, three priorities, and we've got these other items that were raised, but for the rest of the report, I'd like you to consider looking at these major sections, okay? So, this follows the table content, so what's gonna happen after we decide which way we're gonna approach this, and what the, what the priority items are, is we're gonna turn everything over to Dr. Bates, all of our questions, which includes the questions that are, the comments that are in the report. He is gonna meet with Superintendent elect Clancy, and the administrative staff to respond to those, and come back with a plan on how to address them, provide input. Okay. Does that make sense? Makes sense to Jennifer, does it make sense to anybody else?
I'm sure it will, it makes sense.
It will, I know, I'm starting. Okay. So, who wants to give me the next three areas, and if it turns out that we've got a bunch on here, then we'll just move there.
Can we finish what I told you three from over there?
Well, for me, my top three aren't on there, so I think it...
You have to change it then?
Yeah. Did I just confuse everyone? Susan, your teacher helped me out here.
I think what you're saying is, your top three weren't the top, collective top three.
Not necessarily mine, but I think that now that you go through it again, if you wanna speak to just these, that's fine, but that means we've got the rest of these that aren't necessarily on there.
But some of those are sub...
Subs, which is why we...
So, you wanna take the big ones?
I'd like to.
Okay. Then I'll go first.
Thanks, Jen.
HR, cause I'm assuming that includes job descriptions?
It does.
Would be one. People need to know what they are doing. Actually, I'll go first. Sped would be second. And, we've done that. I'm back to budget development, that we've already done it.
Really?
Well, the budget schedule was our number three last time.
So, the development is different than the schedule?
Right. But that's kind of all...
One?
Well, I think it's a subset, specifically, I chose specifically the communication with the towns under the subset of budget development, but I can, budget development would be free.
Wanna share any of your questions, observations, and the report for your three sections, or any other section?
I don't think it's changed a whole lot from last week, or two weeks ago, but the, I think that the job description updates across the entire district, across the entire board need to be updated, I guess that people functionally can't do a job if they don't know what their job is. Sped, I think that the new pupil personnel is the...
Director of pupil personnel.
Director of pupil, is a huge step, I think, kind of consolidating all of the sped under that, but it's still something that needs to be formalized. And, as I said, the budget is all, and it's just a process of making sure that the towns that have to pay for this know what's going on.
Yep. To Lynn?
Sped, facilities, and we need enrichment extended day for...
Enrichment and extended day, uh, district revenue sources, but that, you know what? I have a question about that, so first of all, so you said sped?
Facilities.
An extended day, enrichment, which is a...
We haven't, we haven't gone through all of the, cause over there, exactly, food services, we had revolving accounts over to the left.
I know.
We were gonna discuss all the...
They should revolving accounts.
So, I think revolving accounts, we're gonna, let's just see, let's just see where we go here, because this is one of Lynn's hot buttons. I'm starting to think we should pull revolving accounts out separate from, from the other discussion appointments, and have a substantive conversation on revolving accounts.
So, is that where we fall?
Pardon?
That we fall under revolving accounts?
Yeah, but I'm wondering if we should have that separate from, like dedicate a chunk of time to that.
I think we should, there are a lot of questions.
There are a lot of...
I have a lot of questions. I didn't realize you had fifty-three.
That's what Neil shared, yeah. Okay, so, alright, so...
It wasn't originally, at the beginning of the year, we sort of trying to get our minds wrapped around, we requested revolving accounts, and we got, we got a, you know, we got a certain number that were, some of them were, yeah, there, more money goes in and out and so forth, and more of the pertinent accounts, but we kinda felt like there weren't necessarily as many, that there were more, or something wasn't there. And it didn't actually fall in under, again, that I know, the budget itself, but Dr. Bates was able to get that question moved forward again, and we ended up getting basically fifty-three or fifty-four accounts that appeared from what started to be about ten or a dozen, roughly.
Okay, so, I'm gonna say all better about this. Lynn, do you have anything you wanna share about any other additional questions on these areas, or anything else?
No, you're gonna hit the answer.
Okay. Neil, since you started, you wanna...
You know, they're all important. I think facilities, because of where we're, where we're heading right now, and that obviously there's a new director coming on board and so forth, that's really key. Sped is another one, same rationale. And, yeah, so, and then budget document and review is important to me for the, sort of like the accountability.
Okay. Kathy?
Facilities, but particularly facilities management and rentals, to look at the recommendations for those, sped is another one.
Okay.
And, um... District revenue sources, I think.
Susan?
I would say sped first. And then I guess, I guess the HR would be second for me. And then I'm sort of leaning towards, I guess it's a, it's a, it's all budget-related, so I wonder about the budget maintenance piece, third, but I also understand that, I guess before you can maintain it...
I was gonna, you should just make this one...
Budget.
Yeah, just make it budget. So, this is your number three?
Yeah.
Mark?
Put me down for one on budget. Your bottom hunk.
Yeah.
Special education. And facilities.
Everything moving forward.
Oops, three. Sped. Budget. And accounts payable. Okay, so, clearly, our number four priority is sped, right? It's a toss-up between, I think it's facilities. Pardon?
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Five and six, I mean, it's...
Yeah. Alright. You wanna have a conversation about these the way we did last time, or do you just want to move on? And prioritize the rest of them? Anybody have any specific questions about sped? There's a lot of this document raised. Yeah, go ahead.
Just remind us, so we're identifying these priorities, and then what?
So, we are identifying the priorities, asking any clarifying questions that we need to, in order to understand what is the current process that's identified here. The goal is, are we using best practice? First of all, I don't think that we all understand how everything works, what the processes are, and that was some of the value of the report, was that it started to identify how the actual area functions. So, now that we know, and it may not be accurate, and we'll get the, I mean, but it allows us to have more information than we did in the past of how those areas were. And is there additional information that we didn't understand in the report, or that we're looking for? And those questions and that additional information will be documented, and then everything is turned over to Dr. Bates, who is gonna work with his staff, and go through each section of this, and respond to the recommendations. Are we doing this, are we not doing this? If we're not doing this, what's the plan to put it in place? But there may be additional questions that this document raised that aren't in here, like Neil brought up a couple, those questions may need to be added to this document, because we don't necessarily have the information. Does that make sense?
So, it'll be in the priority order, though, so as they go through it, they're gonna, the six priority areas that you've identified, that will be the order of review?
Right, because, because there's so much here, in order, it's not gonna get done in a couple of weeks, three, four weeks, I'm sure it's gonna...
That's what that guy does, he's a, he's a short gun.
He's gonna get, yeah, and then he's gonna do the handover to Superintendent elect Clancy.
I don't know that I have questions as much as I wanna know what, is it, what the, so you take priority one, which is what?
Technology.
Technology, right, so they go through that and say, well, we found this to be true, but it's not true, see how it all shakes down, and then based on that, what we see is our next steps. So, I don't know that that happens at this level.
I don't know that we are the ones that are gonna fix anything if it needs to be fixed.
No, we need recommendations from the people who have the insight to this, but we need to verify that what is in here is indeed the case, isn't that part of the process?
Right.
So, I don't know what else we could do.
Nothing. I mean, the only thing you could do is look into the document and say, is there additional questions? I've got additional questions.
I've got a lot about the revolving accounts and the extended day, but we're doing that another time.
But the extended day is a revolving account.
No, I know that, so we'll go through that.
So, I think the whole revolving account discussion should be a separate discussion. No, I have a thing about boxes and color.
We've actually previously combined revolving accounts into the food service and other stuff, too, so we've already recombined a bunch of revolving stuff, which we didn't, which we didn't discuss.
We only talked about food services, we didn't talk about the broader revolving accounts category, and there's no way we could've, because there's so many of them. We really talked about food services.
So, it says right next to revolving accounts, that's why we added that, because we realized there's all this other stuff.
So, you really think that they're gonna be able to do fifty-three as a sub?
Well, ten of them have activity, and the other forty are hardly, nothing's going on on them.
If that's the case, if we're gonna try to addition that from food services truly to revolving accounts, then open up the discussion again, because Kathy just said she had questions on...
Extended day.
Extended day. So, let's have the discussion on that, unless somebody has questions, or...
Can I make a suggestion, too?
Yes.
This is just gate receipts, I would change that to gate receipts, and activity, activity funds slash cash accounts, because there is a chain of custody question on various things, there's bonding issues, there's, and it's not just gate receipts, it's the simple cash boxes that are sitting in the offices, you know, when you shoot principal's office, etc.
That's right. You wanna rank order the rest of these, and then hand out to me?
Well, how, how is it going with the questions that we've had so far? Has it really, I mean, really ended it all, or?
No, we're not gonna see, no, we're gonna keep doing this, and then we're gonna turn it all over to Dr. Bates.
But we're not just start, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, why not just start with the six that we have, and then we can unpack this at the next meeting? Because you have revolving accounts, but you also have the cost recovery accounts and food services, like extended day or whatever.
Those are revolving accounts.
I know, but they're also, I think Mark referred to them as entrepreneurial.
Or enterprise-like, so there's, there's a handful that are enterprise-like, quote, profit centers, and then... Or enterprise-like, so there's a handful that are enterprise-like quote profit centers and then there are some which involve state grants, blah, blah. I mean, it, there's a lot to that, there's a lot to that conversation. I don't think we can tackle revolving accounts even one night. I mean, it's because there's, we spent a lot of this year understanding various aspects of the revolving accounts.
So you know what might be valuable is if we're gonna do this to have someone provide an overview, George would be great if you could do it as to what the revolving accounts are, how they work.
Well, I have a publication, did everybody get that?
You have a publication? Why don't you just send it out?
The one, what's that, two?
I sent it out about a month or so ago. Has every account listed the purpose, the amount, the ins and outs of the last three years? So I'll send that back out as a slide if you'd like.
That'd be great, 'cause I think these ladies haven't seen it either.
Probably not.
That'd be helpful. All right.
There is, yeah, so there's, that's how we found out that there were, you know, whatever, fifty-three, fifty-three, fifty-four, whatever, fifty-two. And then we asked some questions and we've got descriptions and so Pat put together a list of descriptions for each particular account. We haven't really had that discussion and gone into detail on that, but that's a discussion in finance subcommittee that we're still yet to have, I think. For more detail on that, but then there are, there are issues which we brought up which involve revolving accounts, but they're more of these enterprise-like things that Kathy's talking about, the profit centers, which are key because two of them at least are bleeding. I mean, they're just, we have food services, which is, which is losing well over a hundred thousand, closer to two hundred thousand dollars year over year. And then we have extended day, which is eighty thousand dollars off at the last report out that I got, a hundred and thirty off from year over year. And, and we have to understand the rationales behind that. Those weren't reported out to us through the budgetary process. And we do have, to be clear, we've got reserves, but those reserves are quickly depleting because we have this problem. And in my mind, every dollar of reserves is a dollar that can be used for a particular funds. So this is, so that's a conversation to have, but that's something that's an extension beyond the Masbo report. Do you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's revolving accounts and food services comes up in there, extended day, but we don't go necessarily deep into the detail, even Masbo doesn't cover that. But we start, as we started to chip into this, initially we started asking questions on food services based on that DESI corrective action plan that was in there. And I just wanted to understand that. Now, that's something that DESI puts out live, the corrective action plans, but it led to further questions about the food services, which then led to all of the enterprise-like accounts.
So within the context of the Masbo report, so let's, so keep, keep that front aligned. And what we're trying to do is build, take the report, review the comments in the report, try to understand the process that they started to outline. May be right, it may not be right, but it's allowing us to have visibility into a lot of the areas of the district that we didn't have visibility into. And if you wanna spend time talking about within, 'cause I don't know that we should go to the broader, I think we need to keep it.
Again, the point I think I'm trying to make is Kathy is talking about verifying what's accurate, what's not accurate. And the point I'm making is that Masbo may bring something up and there actually may be more to it on the other side beyond Masbo, in addition to, is what I'm saying. So I understand some of the things may not be a hundred percent accurate that's in the Masbo report and that's why we need to check and verify, which is huge. And that creates a best practice model for the incoming, and I get that and it's great, especially since there's so many department heads that are changing out, because that would be a great thing to put best practice in place at that point.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying there's some rabbit holes here that we end up falling down when you start looking into like food services, they comment on certain things and then it goes from there, so.
So if we stick with what we're doing, which is the Masbo report, I see what you're saying, but I think I wanna say.
What I'm saying is this food service, if we talked about just the food services, going on food services, for instance, pulling up on the Masbo, there's certain things that are on there, you know? But they don't talk about the fact, they talk about the reserves that are in there, but there's no knowledge that anyone has that it's losing almost a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars year over year. And my point being that if we don't point that out to the incoming superintendent also, that might be something they really wanna get their, their handle on, because those reserves are gonna be around here forever and then that, that would be a huge budget buster for the district.
All right, so a little, can you weigh in a little bit on this?
I've already met with Tom today. Tom's going through the report, looking specifically at what is in there, what is accurate, what isn't accurate. And then we'll sit down with him and sit down with George and Pat and go through all of that. And then again, if there are questions in there that are not true, then that will be the course of action. If there are misleading things that, let's say, they're saying we didn't do this, but in reality we do do it.
That's an easy fix.
Right, and there'll be a statement that says, yes, we do do this and this is how, that sort of thing.
But is it what you're?
No, so the enterprise-like thing should be broken out separately from revolving accounts conversation, I feel, because, and I'm just making this argument, because they are run like businesses or they're supposed to be, that's why they call it enterprise-like, right? They're, they're individual, they have their own little world unto themselves. And so the thing is, in, in, they get reported out in, in the budget as far as like, for instance, extended day, what it's contributing to the district, which I think is going off the top of my head, like two hundred nineteen thousand dollars or something like that, or two hundred ninety-one.
So are we back to a dedicated discussion on revolving accounts only, is that where, do people wanna go there?
I'd like to understand.
I would, I would understand that because there's, there's big red that's going on there. I know Mark said that's preliminary because it's, we're going off of year-to-date, year over year, but we've got a month left and.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to understand how they work, where the areas are of concern for the major ones and like you said, if there's surplus in the accounts, why is it? There might be a reason that there's surplus there.
Well, it's good that there's surplus in there, but if you're, if you're running at a loss, that surplus gets dried up.
Right.
So if we've got three hundred, say four hundred thousand dollar surplus in there, but we're running at a negative a hundred and eighty thousand dollar burn rate or whatever it is.
Right.
That's in there, ninety, whatever, you know, but, but the point, year over year, the point is that that, that's gonna burn up, two, three years, four years.
Right, so, so, so stop, 'cause I don't wanna go down, I don't wanna keep going down. I think what I'm, I'm saying is, do we want to look at the major revolving accounts? 'Cause we're not gonna be able to get fifty-three of them done.
I don't think that's even in Masbo listed in there at all for the other.
I'm sorry?
I mean, there, there are things in there that are talked about, right? Mark, things like chapter seventy and all that other stuff, I mean, that's all listed, but there's no.
I think it's worthy of a thoughtful presentation at some point, maybe as part of our Masbo process or maybe at some point after the fiscal year's over and.
To talk about revolving.
Finance committee can, or the administration can do a report.
But I think, was it Kathy, the, where is it? The enrichment and extended day. Right.
Which is, that's what I think was meant when, but that, when you wrote revolving funds next to food service last time, I believe that that was, that was what you were talking about.
Fifty-three, even twelve?
A lot of those are static accounts that are in there and it's nice to have that report out and to know that they're there and, and there are questions, but they're not huge aspects of the district, right? They're not, they're not huge.
So how many revolving accounts would, would warrant a substantial conversation? That, now, let me rephrase that. A, an overview that could provide, you're smiling, Mark, an overview that could provide, you know, this is what it is, this is how much it is. To George's point, he, he created a, what was it, I don't wanna say Waco, but that's about.
Public, yes, publication.
A publication.
I would say, I would say less than ten.
Less than ten. And you guys have looked at them.
I would agree, because I think that the other revolving accounts are again, not necessarily a Masbo issue. They are an extension as far as report out, so maybe under the budgetary document review, you know, we should, we should know what they are. And we do have questions, but that's all finance subcommittee that we're gonna be asking more of that stuff in.
So if we look at the Masbo report, don't get frustrated, but if we look at the Masbo report, we already talked about food service. I've heard several people say they wanna know about enrichment and extended day. Because it's in the Masbo report, because it's a big ticket item attached to it, then I, I mean, do you wanna hear, I mean, what do you?
So what I would like to see with the, what I understand is that with these revolving accounts, whether they be, I call them cost recovery, like food services and that, they have, a lot of them have balances that seem excessive. And my, what I wanna know is why there's so much money in them if that money isn't needed to cover the costs?
And it's just these?
Well, no, this is, this, the information, like this is from seven one fifteen, this was in the budget. And then over here, there's something else in the Masbo report. I wanna know what's in them and if they are excessive amounts, if, if that money can be used to offset other things within the budget. We heard about the, the food services program that has, you know, excesses of three hundred thousand plus dollars. And yet, they're losing money because kids aren't buying lunches. So, and when, when Tom came and talked, he said, oh, we could buy a refrigerator, still, I don't know, but something with the money. What, why is there so much money in some of these accounts? And should there be? And is there other things that we can, I mean, we're not gonna answer that tonight, but those are my questions. And, and why, like for student parking, we know that it's gonna cost perhaps X amount of dollars to do the maintenance or whatever. Why is there so much money in that account? So that's what I'd like to have, maybe it didn't need to be that much money. I don't know, but I'd like accurate figures and I'd like to get us to be able to look down the column and ask the questions about, why is there three hundred fifty thousand dollars in excess at food services?
I, I would, honestly, I mean, that's an administrative decision in the past, right? So that's really what that, but that, but that gets me to here and there. And I think really the conversation, pardon me, but I, I would say more like how much should be in there? And what is the rationale for having that? And is the rationale supported? Okay, and if it does support that rationale, then yeah, then it should be there. But I, I think that, I think, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, but it would be nice to have some.
We don't have perspective on those accounts.
Right, perspective is what, and I think that if it's, if it's an enterprise-style account, it's supposed to be run as a quasi-business entity within the, but, you know, now we start getting into the whole, you know, are you running a business?
Yeah, we're not doing this, we're not doing it right.
But, but the point is that it is its own quasi-like, like it or not, it is its own quasi-like business and we need to understand this. And we need to understand if there's losses, identify that quick and stop, stem the tide.
So the, so are we getting closer to where we wanna go? Because I think what.
Some of the questions aren't gonna come up until we get the response from the administration. They certainly, and I think that's, we need to kinda wait to find out what's in there that is factual, what isn't there that is, and the information will come. And then we can say, all right, so now we have, and this is coming from the administration, so.
So to that, then everything that's here is contained in these.
Yes.
Finish by ordering these, turn it over to the administration, have them report back and then, I mean, this is gonna eke into the fall, but.
So HR seven. Might as well take people's.
HR is set. Oh, seven, Jennifer.
Well, with revolving accounts, it's getting separate, it's getting, only should they get its own number? Please, the administration be reporting out all of these departments and rankings?
It's just for prioritizing. It's prioritizing because it's a, it's a large body of work. So we, like if, if we really wanna know about. What's number one? SPED. We really wanna know about SPED, but it falls down lower on the list, we may not hear about it until October.
Okay, I was just thinking like if there's something that quickly can be, you know, they can repeat some claim that's in the report quickly and just say payroll's off the, you know, everything they said about payroll, is it true or is true?
Yeah, I don't think people have a big concern about.
No, what I'm saying, like if we can just cross it off quickly, you know, whereas something like SPED seems like it would take even a fifth, you know, by the time they got to it, would they get logged down?
Yeah, they're gonna get logged down, they have a new director coming in, so that's, you know, I mean, the new director, I think, is, is gonna be helpful.
And I think that, that could be used as a guide for any director, well, but that's it. But, and I think to Susan's point, you know, that, that gets used as a, you know, take a look at SPED and best practices and how can this be used as a guide for forming budgetary and, and, you know, business as usual and, you know, best practice? I mean, you could do that for HR, you could do that for SPED, because you've got two directors to come in there, they can review their departments. I mean, that's just the way I see it.
Isn't that round?
Oh, okay. Okay, guys. Transportation, gate receipts and payroll, which of the three, one?
Gate receipts would be.
Just FYI, if you lump in cash accounts, student activities and gate receipts, you're well up over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, so one, two and three, gate receipts, transportation and payroll, what do you want? Gate receipts. Payroll and transportation, yes.
Transportation, SPED, transportation?
I think it's all transportation. There was a SPED transportation, I can't do that.
I don't know that that was a.
No, there was some issues with maximizing the payroll software.
That was a technical, yeah.
Any questions, so I'm just gonna aside it.
Well, I would say HR transportation only just 'cause it's a huge part of our budget.
All right. That's it. Right. That helps you for tonight, but that helps you.
What is E-rate?
Take a lot of. That's huge.
We have E-rate and V-rate two point O.
Right.
So.
All right. I think, so the next steps, the next steps are, Dr. Bates? No. Everybody's punchy. Alida will prioritize these and then you will start working on answering everything for us.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Before you leave.
In twenty-four days.
In twenty-four days.
And I have a question.
It's down to twenty-three now.
I have a question. You had, I have directed George to present on the revolving accounts, 'cause you had perspectives needed on the enterprise-like accounts. Are you gonna have him do that or are you just gonna wait?
We didn't know if, I mean, that is, that was left over there, so that leaves us.
But George is only gonna be in his position until June.
I'd be happy to present on June fifteenth, I will not be available on vacation until June twenty. I can present, I can present revolving accounts off the publication, which Alida will be sending to you in the morning if you'd like. I don't think it's all that complicated and deep. There's a couple of issues that Neil's mentioned around extended day and lunch, we can talk about. Basic issue overall of why is money in there and what accounts and stuff mostly are. So it's a pretty.
You know what, George, I think that's a really good idea because you're the best person to speak to it. And as long as our approach is, we're trying to gather up information to understand it, I think that would probably, if you wouldn't mind, are you good with that? Thank you very much.
I agree with George, I mean, most of those accounts are very, he, he has information that he put out that does, that does detail that, there may be questions on that stuff.
Okay. Okay. I think that, that satisfies a lot of us, then, right? Okay. All right, thank you. I think at this point, we are good. We need to have a motion to adjourn the session to go.
I have a warrant, the warrant's not on the consent agenda, and maybe we should approve them, since we have a warrant.
Can we, if it's not on the agenda?
I, I think you have to.
We did not, we did not do them during Finister today.
Are they ready?
They're ready to be signed.
They're just not listed on the agenda.
Okay, so.
In the school committee, I don't think it.
I think that means it needs an active vote, if it's not on the agenda.
So, I'd like to move, because of.
Oh, I'm sorry, is this because we don't have them ready yet, though?
No, they're ready right here.
It should, they were in this one.
I'm sure they're ready. It just happened to be not on the agenda, and we should.
It may be because originally, we thought that they may not be ready for the night business today earlier, and therefore, we said we might have to go through the three-person signing process, but I think you can override that by doing, since they're ready and they're here, I think you can do that.
Okay. So, who wants to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the current wings warrants.
One second. All of them favor. Approve unanimous, thank you. Okay, everybody's getting paid. And now, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies, not to reconvene to open meeting? Jennifer, thank you. Second?
Second.
Kathy.
I.
Thank you, Neil. Yes, Lynn?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Lorraine? Yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Jennifer.
All of us.
Pardon?
Just go ahead and just.
Dr. Bates will be with us, and that's it. I think we're good. Thank you.